This conference will now be recorded.
I know subsequent to that meeting Zach and I talked and I thought we had settled on the two inches Zach, isn't that, you felt that, that was where you in the?
Engineer said one and a half.
The engineer said one and a half, Zach said, Zach said, well, the town, our engineering consultant said two inches and the engineers that I spoke to said an inch and a half. So I just wanted to make sure that that, you know, that got into the record that there's, there's been something subsequent to that after the meeting, minutes after the meeting, rather. Does anybody else have anything? Okay, motion to accept the minutes? With my changes. Second, Neil?
Second.
Everybody in favor? Barb, you got it? Next on the agenda is a UDO discussion. You know what, let me, let me talk a little bit to everybody here first. So I know a lot of you, I have, I have read the Facebook traffic. I have gotten a lot of information from people individually and the town staff has passed on your comments, whether they were texted or emailed or just phoned in. And I want to tell you how much I appreciate everybody's interest and the time that you're taking in, in coming out here this evening. I really appreciate it. I want everybody to understand what we're doing here so you can manage your expectations. Our job here is really more technical than, than anything else. We will look through these, these changes, whether text changes or plans or whatever they are, and we will balance that against what we see in the existing UDO and the new land use plan that was just adopted a few months ago. And from there, we will advise the Board of Commissioners on, on what, what we find. And then the Board of Commissioners will make the decision. So if you want to make public comments, the best place to make public comments would be at the Board of Commissioners meeting next, next Monday. My recommendation to you is to listen and, and understand what the process is of what we're doing here. If you have a question about something we're talking about, something specific to that agenda item, then I encourage you to come to the podium, give us your name and your address, please write your name and address on a little paper there and go ahead and answer the question and we'll do our best to answer that question because that may give you some better information when you go to, to the Board of Commissioners meeting next week. And I expect to see twice as many people at the Board of Commissioners meeting next week. Okay? So I know a lot of you came here to, to say you're against it or you're for it or that you don't know one way or the other. So I, I just want to make note of how many people are here against this? I just want to see a show of hands. How many people are here because they're against it? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 27. And how many here in support? One, two, three, four. I'm...
Majority rule.
No, it doesn't work that way. It, it does at the Board of Commissioners meeting, but only the Board of Commissioners votes, but those were majority rule. Okay, so let me, let me clear up again what, what we, what the planning board is not. The planning board is not the county health department. We don't determine whether or not it's appropriate for whatever wastewater solution the, the developer has, has come up with. A civil engineer makes the, you know, will, will come up with that, an idea about a wastewater solution that goes to the, the health department, the health department will, will give him a stamp and then that goes on file and that's, that's got to be good enough for us. We are not civil engineers, we're not wastewater experts. So we just take that into consideration. The only thing we really care about here is, is we, we do consider existing soil conditions, septic limitations, and those things that we learned from the recent land use plan work that was done. I'm sure a lot of you took, took part in that with, with the surveys. We, as far as topography, we have nothing to do with that. Okay? If the, if there is an engineer stamp that a topographic survey has been conducted on that land, and that's all, that's all we care about, right? We just want to see that engineer stamp. That's why they went to school all that time. Okay? So we can't say that, you know, the engineer stamp is on there, but we disagree and we think the land is too low. Okay? We just, that's just not something that, that this board is able to do. We are not an architectural committee. I can't, we, we cannot recommend what color or, or anything else about, about these structures. That, although you can do that in a homeowners association, this board cannot, cannot make those kind of determinations. We are not a code enforcement body. We are not building inspectors and none of us will ever enter, should never enter any private property unless we're invited. If, if for some reason we're, we're invited by a private, you know, a private property owner for some reason, we would, we would go there. But otherwise, we should not be on private property, private property. We are not a permitting body. Okay? So permits are given by the permitting officer who has some specific training and certifications in order, in order to do that. We are, like I said before, we are also not an approval, approval body. We are an advisory body to the Board of Commissioners. And most importantly, we are not able to excuse a developer from adhering to any aspect of the UDO. The only people who could do that is either the Board of Commissioners or the Board of Adjustment, and that's what they're for. Okay? So as long as we, everybody understands what, what we're doing here, I think it'll be easier as we go forward and you guys won't be as upset that we're not, we're not doing more. So item three on the agenda is the UDO discussion for the proposed change to 8-19.2. And Mike King is the sponsor for that, so he's going to take it.
Okay. Originally, we've got the new ordinance, Unified Development Ordinance. We also got the Land Use Plan, both of these approved by the Board of Commissioners. One of the things that's in this new ordinance is the special use permit. And that's the mechanism to get things done. It is far more flexible than the old ordinance, which, you know, if it's uncorrectly, read the things in there and it's sort of yes or no. The special use permit allows flexibility to accomplish things that were much more difficult under the previous ordinance. But I, I found some problems with this and I'm going to read to you what I sent to the planning board after we've used this special use permit already in the town and it's only...
Sorry. So I'm going to read what I sent to the planning board so you'll be on the same page as they are. Below you will find draft changes to paragraph 819.2, parentheses C. "The application procedure in the current Unified Development Ordinance places the approval recommendations for special use permits almost entirely with the UDO administrator. The role of the planning board is simply to provide a statement of consistency with the land use plan. The suggested change takes the review and recommendation process from the UDO administrator, places it with a planning board. The role of the Board of Commissioners remains unchanged." So what you have is a special use permit according to this ordinance that is handled by the developer and the UDO administrator, just two people. And here, here's my issue. "The new UDO is a dramatic departure from the previous ordinance with virtual elimination of conditional zoning and the addition of special use permits in many of the permitted uses in section 11.5 of the ordinance. The SUP provides flexibility in proving conditions and is generally, that are generally compatible with other land uses in the zoning district. In the current UDO, the UDO administrator is essentially the review process. The planning board has a very minor role. I find this problematic. The issue with this process is that the entire process of review leaves all the discussion, review and recommendations in the hands of a single paid employee and the developer of the property or the property owner. This process occurs outside public scrutiny until it is brought before the BOC for approval. By placing the review process with a planning board, adjacent landowners and interested residents will have the opportunity in planning board meetings to provide input in a less structured environment and before recommendations are submitted to the Board of Commissioners. The review and approval process includes a public hearing by the BOC and that remains unchanged." So what I've done is suggested that the planning board be the primary review of SUPs rather than the administrator. Yes, sir. SUP is a special use permit. It's the new mechanism of, of how, in this ordinance of how things get done. You're not the development ordinance, that the ordinance that we approved earlier this year by the Board of Commissioners. Yes?
If you just read the document, if I may ask for clarification, when you said that this new ordinance or the change to it has now given the power to one piece, official for the town and the developer, taking it out away from public scrutiny, it sounds kind of like backdoor, good old voices. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a potential for that. Yeah, there's a potential for that. I'm not saying it happens, okay? But I'm saying if, if a special use permit and you have one person in the town on the planning staff that handles those things and one developer, it's, it's, it's much easier than to do something that you might not want to see happen. Whereas here, first of all, we don't decide anything, but we bring it to the public. We bring it, and that is the reason I am suggesting this change. And we're going to suggest the change, I'm going to read the change to you here in a second. What we are suggesting to the Board of Commissioners is that you approve this change, that when we have special use permits, they get the public scrutiny of a meeting like this with the Board of, with the planning board.
And, and if I may, I, I just need to remind people that if you want to ask a question, I, I really need you to come to the podium. Because there's also people online that, that are trying to hear what you're asking. And although we could hear it in this room, you can't hear it unless you're in front of the microphone.
Okay. So the, the change that I'm proposing is to paragraph 819.2, paragraph C, "Determination of Compliance. The UDO administrator shall review the application to ensure it is complete and forward the complete application to the planning board for review. The application must be received by the planning board 14 days prior to our scheduled meeting." And here's the change. "The planning board will review the application and issue a report with suggested changes and recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. This report will contain a statement of consistency with the land use plan, recommended zoning, zoning changes, variances and other details that clearly define the conditions of the SUP. The planning board's report will be summarized their findings with recommendations, recommendations to approve, approve with conditions or to deny. If the planning board report is not received by the BOC within 45 days of its first consideration, the BOC will proceed without a report." So what I'm saying here is the planning board is going to take the special use permits, which we've had some already, and make them, for lack of a better word, a public spectacle. Board, any...
So my, the only issue I have with this is the word variance, which becomes very confusing because variance is, is the word we use when we're talking about Board of Adjustment, which is doing something outside of the existing ordinance. So my recommendation is that we change the word variance to conditions.
Yeah, the, the reason I put variance in there is neither this board, we can't recommend or Board of Commissioners can't approve, okay? Something that is a direct violation of the ordinance without a variance. So the process I'm looking at is we might identify the need for variances in that. So I, I'm fine with conditions, but the idea was to identify if there might possibly be a variance, might be necessary, handled by the Board of Adjustment. So that was the only reason that was in there.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, fortunately, we have an attorney with us tonight. The planning board is not qualified to, to recommend a variance to someone, right? All we do is basically, you know, our, our advisory role, our technical role. But if a very, it's up to the, either the town staff and the developer or whoever else to determine if they want to pursue a variance through the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, that's correct. The planning board's role as it currently stands under the UDO is simply as an advisory board to the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah. To make it really simple, suppose somebody had a project where they wanted to just build a house and the setback was 40 feet and they only had 35 feet, we would identify they would need a variance. Neither the Board of Commissioners or this board can do anything. That is solely the role of the Board of Adjustment. So that's why it was...
Does anyone else have anything? No, no other discussion because this is something we're going to take a vote on. Okay?
I don't have a problem with variances. If, if the author wants to add conditions to variances, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, variance is a term of art. And the ability to evaluate variances and prove them does not rest with this board. And that's why the chair is suggesting different. Conditions might be a better suit for this particular...
Suits me. Just, just so we understand, I think everybody understands.
Okay. And later in the paragraph, we do, we do say that we will send a recommendation to either approve, approve with conditions or deny. So it kind of ties the language together a little bit. What do we do from here? Do I need to get a motion to vote on it or do we just need a vote?
So this is a little bit of an unusual occurrence for those staffs not generated the text amendment. So I think, you know, y'all could take a vote to advance it and then, you know, who's going to present it to the Board of Commissioners? You know, at an upcoming meeting, but it'll have to be properly publicly, publicly noticed as well. So, so that'll probably be the July Board of Commissioners meeting.
Okay. Do I need to, okay, so can I, can I have a show of hands to advance this to the Board of Commissioners as we've discussed it, written here, changing the word variance to conditions? Let me, can I see a show of hands? Okay, and that is one, two, three, four, five, six, to approve. Okay. Okay, I'm moving on to number five is the consideration of a text amendment to add townhouse as a special use in the R30 residential zoning district. So who is the sponsor of this? Of this?
Town staff. Um, I'll be sure to be...
Okay. So I, so I take it there's going to be some, some questions about this? And, and again, I, I ask you to come to the podium and so we can clearly understand what you're saying. That's what we just did before we, the text amendment. Oh wait, what was number? Yeah, I'm sorry, what was number four? I didn't see that, that, I meant to ask about that. What was that, number four? I didn't have anything on my package actually for number four.
That's the other thing. Mike King, the Longcheek Village Residential Zoning District.
Oh, okay. We're, I'm sorry, I should have, that's right, I forgot about that. We're going to, we're going to table that until the next meeting. There was just, it was too much.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and read read, read the text amendment change and, and it is, it is this. It, it gives the description of townhouse as a principal structure containing two or more single family attached dwelling units with each unit on its own individual lot. No unit shall be connected on more than two sides by common walls. All setback and dimensional requirements of the zoning district shall apply to the overall development. No individual unit shall be required to meet the minimum lot size or dimensional requirements. Okay? So do we want to open the, we want to open discussion on that? Neil?
Yeah, we should. So motion to open discussion?
Okay, I'm, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, vote. I'm... So this, this is huge. This is probably the biggest change that we, certainly since I've lived here. Certainly through our entire discussion, through the new UDO over the past year. And we all got pretty deep into that, that UDO discussion. And there was discussion about, about townhomes. There was discussion about attached dwellings. So so I think, I think it's important that we, that we really scrub this carefully and make sure that if we're going to make any changes to the text regarding and townhouses, that we make sure that, that there are ample conditions and parameters on that. I am concerned about one, it is currently not in the, on the table of permitted uses. The table of permitted uses has three types of dwellings. One is duplex and duplexes are allowed in the R10M zoning district. The other is multifamily and multifamily is allowed in the R10M multifamily zoning district. The other category for dwelling is single family. And that is allowed in all five residential zoning districts. Right? So from, from R10 to R30 and including multifamily. I think where the difficulty is in this is that the, the table of permitted uses calls out single family dwelling, but does not use the word attached or detached. And a townhouse is in fact a single family dwelling. It is a single family attached dwelling. When traditionally, here in town, we have had only single family detached dwellings. Okay? So I, I, I think that's why this is so, so important that we, that we get this language, right? Because it changes everything.
I was going to say, it's not, it's not easy to read that through the first time and understand what's going on. You're talking about single family. The natural inclination of people is to think of a single structure with one family in it. And that's not what we're talking about when we're talking about townhomes. We're talking about a single structure with multiple families in it, but it's not multifamily. That's the confusing part. And I had to read it about 100 times and I went through the UDO process with y'all. So it's important that we talk about it and clarify.
Yeah. Hi.
Hi, Ginger Gold, 136...
Just push the button until the light comes on.
So I'm listening, so can you define a multifamily housing?
Two families live and they want a room like this with some kind of separation, but they can walk between their families.
And does that exist anywhere other than a hotel?
Here, here in town?
I mean, in any town. Because I, I'm not sure that's the right definition for multifamily housing.
Well, it is according to the documents, according to some of the documents that we've seen and I could read it to you. I mean, it's, it's not easy to hear, but...
Okay, but that's just a, a point. Because, I mean, you're going through the definitions and so they're incredibly important.
Yes.
And I understand the multifamily housing is that you share a wall. And I don't know if you came across that definition anywhere, but we'll just leave it like as that.
So let me, let me give you the, for the purpose of discussion, I put together some terms so that we would be able to all be on the same street of music because we had some trouble with that the last, the last meeting. So it is a building containing four or more individual dwellings with separate cooking facilities and toilet facilities for each dwelling. So one building, several dwellings.
That's a multifamily housing? Okay, good, thank you.
Ginger, can you make sure that you put your, your address? Because we didn't, we didn't hear that. Yeah.
The terms I have, you know, from the very beginning is using a text amendment. A text amendment to allow townhouses in the R30 districts. This would apply to all of R30. And some of you may know that there's R30 below 24 and above 24. So it applies...
I was gonna say, it's not, it's not easy to read that through the first time and understand.
Right.
You're talking about single family. The natural inclination of people is to think of a single structure with one family in it. And that's not what we're talking about when we talk about townhomes. We're talking about a single structure with multiple families in it, but it's not multifamily. That's the confusing part. And I had to read it about a hundred times and I went through the UDO process with y'all. So it's important that we talk about it and clarify.
Yeah. Hi.
Hi, I'm Ginger Gold, 136.
Just push the button until the light comes on.
So I'm listening. So can you define a multifamily housing? And does that exist anywhere other than a hotel?
Here, here in town?
I mean, in any town. Because I, I'm not sure that's the right definition for multifamily housing.
Well, it is according to the documents, according to some of the documents that we've seen and I could read it to you. It's not easy to hear, but.
Okay, but that's just a, a point because I mean, you're going through the definitions. And so they're incredibly important.
Yes.
And I understand the multifamily housing is that you share a wall. And I don't know if you came across that definition anywhere, but we'll just leave it like as that.
So let me, let me give you the, for the purpose of discussion, I put together some terms so that we would be able to all be on the same street of music. Because we had some trouble with that the last, the last meeting. So it is a building containing four or more individual dwellings with separate cooking facilities and toilet facilities for each dwelling. So one building, several dwellings.
That's a multifamily housing? Okay, good. Thank you.
Ginger, can you make sure that you put your, your address? Because we didn't, we didn't hear that. Yeah.
The comments I had, you know, from the very beginning is using the text amendment. A text amendment to allow townhouses in the R30 districts. This would apply to all of R30. And some of you may know that there's R30 below 24 and above 24. So it applies indiscriminately to any place in R30. The other thing is the text amendment does not provide any conditions of quality, density, parking, landscaping and all of these other things. So the issue I have with I can understand the need and would support townhouses in Cape Carlin, but I think like other districts that, you know, you have R10M, you have R20, B1, B10, 20 and 30. You've got all these places where this stuff is supposed to go. This text amendment allows us to go into the biggest residential district in our town. And I have issue with that because it's, it's almost like, for lack of a better word, a free pass. But that's, that's the issue I have with the, using the text amendment. Now, if we have, if we found a place, I, I think within the triangle, when I think of the triangle, it's 24, Bayonne, Ocean and 58. I think there's opportunity to do things there because it would be something that would, it could be zoned for that. I think, I also think this needs to be zoned for this, not added into another place. We don't have that. Can I keep going there, Susan?
Mike, I was gonna say, Zach, Zach, could you pull up the zoning map so everyone could see what is labeled as R30? Mike, everyone may not know that. Yeah.
While that's taking place, could somebody articulate for the audience what the difference between 10, 20, 30 or?
So the differences between the R10, R10M, R13 and then R20 and R30 is lot size for the first two. R10 is 15,000. R13, which is a relatively new zoning district we have back here like on Bonita, is 13,500 square feet for the lot. And then R20 and R30 is 20,000 square feet per lot. The only difference is the setbacks. So in in R20 and R30, the difference in the setbacks is, I think there's a difference of, of five feet in the front and 40 feet, a difference of rather than 30 feet in the back. So what you're looking at here is, is our zoning map for the town. Everything in yellow is R30. So that's why we're so intense on making sure that we get this right. Because this, this impacts everything that you see there in yellow. And that's, and that's why it's important to understand that. So.
Except that which has restricted covenants, it won't impact that.
It, that's right. Pax, thank you for, so if, if you are in an HOA and there's restricted covenants for, you know, for square feet per home, for only detached, then you're protected. I, I live in Star Hill North. Our covenant, our covenants protect us from, you know, tiny houses moving in and that kind of thing. But if you are not in an HOA, then that, that is, and protected by covenants, then it is a different story. So. Is that mic on?
My name's Reagan Porter. I live at 104 Quailwood Circle. The R30 to me is a little bit concerning. It looks like the entire town. I'm curious as to the motivation of this idea of changing verbiage to include townhomes when I don't understand why that four acre lot can't be parceled into four lots that are already previous, previously back in the Star Hill area. There's several issues, you know, back after Florence, Star Hill washed out. I think it took the town six to eight weeks to get that road repaired so that all of the traffic from Star Hill North no longer had to funnel out the other end of Star Hill or Pine Lake. Pine Lake also historically floods, which I'm sure the town is very knowledgeable about. It happens after a heavy rain, not just a hurricane. There's a canal off of Fox Drive. There has to be some sort of water source through there that feeds that canal. If we remove four acres of land, I'm curious as to what's going to occur with all the water. I know they say that there's been surveyors and engineers on the job, but given the flooding status of the town and the way that the road is already washed out, I'm not super confident in the skills of those people. I personally want to know the motivation of adding townhouses at this point in the town's movement forward. I have to question, you know, I know every year annually, the government pumps a ton of money into low income housing tax credit. And a lot of times that credit is used to offset tax burdens for developers. I know that townhomes happen to be under that umbrella. When I wrote about this on Facebook last week, of course, I got bombarded about the low income housing. I'm not speaking about low income housing, speaking about the motivation of the developer all at once to want to slam 22 townhomes in four acres of land where other families have bought in good faith, they're buying one plus acres to raise their children. We know that most families average two cars. You're looking at a 44 car increase on that corner. You know, there's several issues at hand and for me, I just have to question the transparency and the motivation of the developer at this point in time to come forward with a plan like this. And where are the protections of the community members that purchased back there in good faith? You know, why are we entertaining a verbiage change and allowing, possibly allowing movement forward?
Well, so let me answer a couple of the questions. It is not, the town does not own that property and it's not up to the town to determine if that town, if that property should split, be split from four and a half acres.
No, I understand.
So that's, we, we have nothing.
No, that comment is like, what's the motivation of the developer? I know that a house across the street.
Developer, of course, is to utilize their land, right?
Sure, sure. But as a board and as a town and as a zoning, you know, exception, we, you guys have the voice to say whether it happens or not. Yeah.
But, but I, I think if, if you want to know what motivated the, the text change, I, I just got passed a note by my, my partner. And, and I, I would say let Zach, let Zach let you know, you know, how, how they arrived at, at that text change.
So yeah, there's, it's kind of, this is more of a formality as opposed to anything else because you look at under the special use permit section, there's a use not identified on the table, permitted in special uses or use that fits the character of the zoning district, but does not that the precise dimensions of the district may apply for a special use permit. That's already something that's in the UDO and probably provides an avenue for a development to advance through the special use permit process. And talking with the town's attorney, it was recommended that we make it a little bit more formal. So this is more of a technicality in terms of how we're approaching this. But you can make the argument that the current UDO already provides that they can apply for a special use permit. This at least provides a definition for what it looks like and clarifies that it is a special use permit process that it would go through. And special use permit process is a case by case, individual review process that is specific to each of these sites that apply for a special use permit. It provides the Board of Commissioners a greater level of control over these developments as opposed to if it was just put in as a permitted use, in which case it would be a permit that was issued in-house by the staff. So in terms of having some latitude and control over specific conditions to put on these types of development, the special use permit process is going to afford the Board of Commissioners probably the greatest level of control to control some of these factors. And if it's not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood or if there's issues and doesn't meet the criteria, then they have the basis to deny a special use permit application. So it's not, you know, the staff doesn't make any representation or recommendation one way or another, but this is the process. This is formalizing that process to make sure that we're, you know, crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is so that it can advance to that stage to be considered, not saying whether it's going to be approved or denied. It allows it to at least be considered. And for the Board to hear that feedback from the, the community about, you know, looking at each of the criteria that's in the special use permit process, considering each of those items and the feedback from the community, from expert witnesses, does it meet those criteria? Or is it inconsistent with those criteria? And that's the process for the Board of Commissioners. But, and just to separate out the conversation a little bit, so we got the text amendment and then we got two different special use permits, so.
Yeah, that's important. That's the other thing I wanted to let you know that right now, we're just, we're talking about a text change unrelated to these two projects and we're going to get to those two projects. I'm going to get in deep on that. So.
So the planning board will need to, you know, provide a recommenda, either a favorable or unfavorable recommendation of the text amendment. And then we'll go to the next agenda item, which is the special use permit. And I believe that wants the Pine Lake, Star Hill one and then all of other areas.
So, so let me tell you what my, I'm sorry, so did you want to?
I'm gonna write my name down and I'm, I write slow, so please.
So let me tell you what my it is, the, the stroke of a pen changes everything in yellow, potentially could change everything in yellow. And I undeveloped. And if you, if you look at what undeveloped land is around here. Not just, and, and I don't want, I don't want to just talk about this one project, but we have a lot of undeveloped land in town. We have, we have parcels that are over, over 10, 15 acres that would fall into this this, that are R30 zoned. And this, so that it has, it has a huge impact. I don't know that I'm comfortable with, I mean, if there's, if there is a way to do this with, with a special use permit, where it is, where it truly is individual properties. I am less concerned with this sweeping change to the, the picture of our town. You know, there are, there are a lot of properties out there undeveloped that could fit four little townhouses. There's, there's a lot of them out there, right in everybody's neighborhood.
Like, yeah. Issues that, not just what we've been speaking, but you want to let the gentleman speak first?
Sure.
I, I don't want to hijack it in the wrong direction. I'm sorry. I'm Doug Cowley. I live at 312 Behealane. I've been in Star Hill North since inception. So we're original homeowners, very familiar with the area. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you guys. And I'll actually be brief even though it may seem like I'm not going to. I looked at the UDO and it talks about, when I see 18.9.1 about special use permits. I know we're talking to, but point one talks about it. And it says that the intent of this section is to only permit special uses that do not have any adverse impact on health, safety and general welfare. It does not say you weigh the odds and maybe it's better or maybe it's not. It says will not have adverse effects. So I just wanted to call that to your attention. I, I have a question because we're talking about, it's my understanding that if we want to do this now, we don't have to rewrite anything. That they simply do a special use permit, which is what we're doing and that's what we talk about. So with the changing of the text, we're talking about basically making it a, basically what we're doing is we're defining a single family house as a townhome is what we're asking to do there, right? Because we already have a venue to do a special use permit, which is what we're doing in this case. So just, I want to make sure that I understand it. So we're just asking to clarify or to change it to a townhome, a single family?
Well, well.
I Googled it for like two hours this afternoon and single family, everywhere I looked is a detached, freestanding without connecting walls. Now that's Google. So, you know, I don't, I don't know, but I, we're, we're in this era in our country today where we're trying to redefine things. You know, the definitions there, I think we know what is what. And I think we know that a townhome is not a single family house. So if we want to put a townhome there, that's fine. Let's rezone that area. But let's not change words so that we can backdoor approve something.
So the reason it's a single family dwelling is because the, the building that one family lives in underneath the land is also legally attached to that building and it's the same owner. Does that make sense?
It does. So that's, and the catch is no zoning applies. You don't have to have a setback. You don't have to have, I understand.
That's where there's some concern there, right? So all of the conditions that we put on our lowest density zoning district, we are now putting our highest density
Right.
housing.
Yeah.
And that seems incongruent to me. That, that does not jive. So that, so, and I, I did a little bit of reading on this and, and of course I have no idea really how to understand what I'm reading and the attorney could probably help. My understanding is that when, when you have a zoning district that has the most restrictions and you, and you take away one of those restrictions, that, that, that flows down. Does that?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. So in other words, if, if we, if we make this change for R30, it's effectively making the change to R10 and, and R20.
You're redefining what a single family home is.
So the way zoning works is, like I said, your, your most restrictive use restricts, you know, whatever it says it restricts. But it includes all the, all the less restrictive things. So, you know, your, you know, most restriction that forbids you having a high rise apartment building, that's still going to allow you to have a single family dwelling.
Right. Okay. Yeah.
The, the other question that I had is I, I understand your role as a technical advisor. I completely get it. I understand the role of the Board of the Commissioners. The statement of responsiveness is prepared by you or the Board of Commissioners?
Oh, no, I didn't, I, I haven't gotten near that thing yet. That, that, that is part of the package that the staff gives to us.
I got you. So when I read this, this statement is saying that we, the planning board agrees. Is that correct? That you agree with this plan?
So the planning board develops their statement of consistency. It's, it's actually a statement of consistency rather than a statement of reasonableness. I know it's wrong in the packet, but it's up to the planning board to identify whether it's consistent or inconsistent. And that's something, that's the next agenda item, but that'll be something that for each of these special use permits, they'll determine whether it's consistent or inconsistent.
Yeah, I understand. And the reason I ask is because I'm reading the statement as written that I would assume the board gets or would use. And it, it says some things like the benefits outweigh the detriment and things like that. I just, I'm asking, is that your opinion or not?
Oh, we haven't even, we haven't even gotten to that.
Well, somebody wrote it. So.
Yes, the staff, the staff prepared it.
All right. Okay. So that, that was, that was one of the things. And then, you know, it made a couple of statements and it, it just had me scratching my head where if we're going to say the benefits outweigh the detriments to neighbors in the surrounding community, I'd like to know what criteria that was. And that's not, that, that's not something for this meeting and I don't want to.
Well, well, actually, it's, it, we'll see it on, we'll see it later in the package and we'll, and we'll talk about it.
Is this the package that's been out? Because I've read the package.
About the, about, well, when we talk to, when we talk about the benefits and, and the detriments, that, those are the things that are broken down into special use permit.
Yeah, I, I did not see anything that spoke to that. Like I said, I, all I saw was, my understanding with this statement was coming from you to the Board of Commissioners. It's not, maybe this one, but are you going to provide one to the Board? What's the process?
We will, after, after we go through this. So
You will provide.
Let's talk about what we're doing right now with the text change.
Right.
The Board will, will take a vote whether or not to, to provide a favorable recommendation for this text change to the Board of Commissioners. And we'll, you know, have an explanation. As far as what is here is a state, statement of reasonableness is actually a statement of consistency. And, and we would do the same thing. We would take a vote and forward that to Board of Commissioners, whether or not we felt it was consistent or inconsistent.
Gotcha. So this threw me off and I apologize because I'm looking at this and this is, as far as I was thinking, this was your statement. And I'm like, well, hold on, wait a minute. That kind of affects me and I, And I'm like, whoa, hold on, wait a minute. That kind of affects me and I, I don't necessarily think this way. So I, I appreciate that clarification. Last thing I just wanted to add. And, and that is I reviewed the application and all the information filled out on the application. And there were some things that I felt were misleading. To say that, you know, it's going to be buffered on three sides with trees is misleading.
So I'm gonna, I'm just going to ask you to.
You want me to come back in a minute?
Come, come back.
I got it.
When we, or, or we'll never get through this agenda.
I, I'm quite, I understand completely.
People to ask questions, but we've got to stay on the agenda.
I agree. I'm fine. Thank you, ma'am.
So, so if we could just wrap our heads around that this.
Excuse me. I, I would just like to add one thing. What I'm concerned about is.
Tom, state your name.
Oh, Tom Ruderman, 315 Star Hill. I'd just like to bring up the word precedent. And, or as it's commonly known nowadays, slippery slope. So if you, let's say you decide to go ahead with, or the board decides, whatever, the Commissioners decide to go ahead with the, you know, the special use permits and so forth. What's that going to do to open up the rest of the town in R30? And how easy does that make that for another developer to come along? And all of a sudden, well, we liked what this guy did, but we don't like what this guy's doing. And where's that going to put the town in a position where they're going to end up in court? Over this. That's all I'm saying. I'm just, you know, like you say, there's a lot of property in this town that's not developed. And if you open it up for one, do you have to open it up for all?
Well, we, we don't want to end up in court and that's why the attorney is here. So that's, that's, you know, that's the whole, that's the whole purpose of it, to make sure that what we're doing is, we're doing, we're doing what we're supposed to do, how we're supposed to be doing it.
Hi, ma'am.
Hi.
I do write slow as well.
Okay.
Um, I kind of told my mother I wouldn't speak today. Um, um, my name is Jennifer Paris and I live at 522 Quillwood Court. I'm the girl that's been going around with a petition. I have, I, I got really angry because, um, I felt like things were done sneaky. And I know that's not the, you know, a term y'all would use or whatever, but it's like this little teeny post. And if, if some of the police officers in our neighborhood hadn't told me, I would not have known. I do not get the newspaper. I am not on Facebook. I am not, you know, I'm not even involved in any kind of government or anything. I, it just, um, I, I couldn't understand why somebody wanted to put townhouses in the middle of a community where I'm back in Star Hill North. In order to get out, we don't have any trans, we can't get out other than those, that, that artery. And I felt like that should be considered in that, in y'all's, um, special use permit, because there has to be, not only the flooding and whatnot, there, you can't get out of Star Hill North without going through that corridor one way or the other.
And all that is a consideration.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
So one, one of, one of my concerns here is that we, we are essentially putting multifamily housing without any restrictions or conditions, the way multifamily housing is defined in our own U D O. And that, and that's a problem. I think we need to, any, any type of, and we're going to have to talk about attached homes because we're going to do it for the, that's the whole plan for the triangle. Whether or not somebody develop, chooses to develop it in this millennium or not, that is what our land use plan is. So we're going to have to come up with, with that language. Um, you know, right now it's 7,920 square feet per lot. And that lot would be, um, you know, the, the, the ground underneath the townhouse, including the front yard and the back. Whatever that, whatever the buyer of that townhouse, whatever there be, describes it, right? So a condominium is just the airspace inside the house. A, you know, a townhouse or a single family attached dwelling is the ground underneath it as well. So that's where that 7,920 square feet comes from. If we're going to do this, we need to redefine that. You know, we are, I just don't think that we are ready to, to make this sweeping change without a lot of conditions. Mike?
I want to speak a little bit on density. The, that neighborhood goes back to the seventies and back then, the golf club community, you know, housing development there. We have chosen in that area to have the lowest density possible. Right now, we're surrounded in this town on the north and the south by water, one Pettifer Creek and the sound. The sound has undergone pollution, they closed shell fishing in 98, right there, Deer Creek, one of the biggest oyster beds around. We've got Eco Coliform and Pettifer Creek. And we've got the constant issues of stormwater runoff. And I don't know, increasing the density, if you take that particular lot up there, you have to have roughly three times as much septic area for those 22 lots, or 22 homes compared to if it were a single family with half, roughly half acre.
So Zach, can you pull up the future land use map from the, from the newly adopted land use plan?
So I see density being an issue. We don't need, we need to keep density minimum in this town. Whoever laid out this town did that. Very little R10 out and mostly all the neighborhoods, single family.
So the, the, the new land use plan that was adopted in February is crystal clear about where low dense, that we would stay low density. And this was adopted by the Board of Commissioners, that low density would remain outside the triangle and some other little spots. And medium density would be inside the triangle. And I, it seems like what we're doing here with this text amendment is not consistent with that land use plan. And those decisions were made with the land use plan to keep the low density housing outside that triangle. That decision was made specifically to address septic and stormwater runoff. So, so to go outside of that newly adopted land use plan seems very strange to me when we just adopted in February after a year-long study to do it. Zach, are you bringing it up?
Yeah.
If, if the, where they're proposing, is that low density, is that considered low density?
Let me, I, I'm good, I'm getting to, I'm sorry.
I just wanted him to read his statement that he read earlier again.
Zach, that's for you.
Want to read again, the second from the special use permits? A use, a use not identified and the table permitted in special uses are a use that fits the character of the zoning district, but does not fit the precise dimensions of the district may apply for a special use permit.
So the character is stated in there? And townhomes are considered the, the character of that district? Or the single family homes that are, that are there?
I think that's up for the Board of Commissioners to decide when they review the, the special use permit, whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the character of the, I think you can make an argument one way or the other on that, so.
Okay.
Sir, can you state your name if you don't mind?
Stesser. Joe Stesser?
Thank you. What is that? If you have a question, it just needs to come up to the microphone. I, I promise I avoid nothing. Okay, I, does anybody have anything else about this text change? And Paxton, I, I called you earlier and said you would be voting in this, so.
Yes. I just want the folks assembled here to understand what this text change means. And I want a show of hands before we vote to see if those assembled want the planning board to vote for it or against it. But first I want you to understand what it's saying. It's, the ordinance now allows people to apply for a special use permit without the planning board being involved. Is that what you want? And do you want there to be more conditions and scrutiny on this process? Well, you just, it doesn't sound like you understand the process we're trying to accomplish. But if these folks assembled don't want this or want it studied further, I just would like to know. And we are only an advisory board. And this cannot affect people in subdivisions with restrictive covenants. Exactly my point. Why are you here if you don't understand what's going on? Well, that's. You know, the, 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 the lady in, at 522 Quillwood Court does not live in Star Hill North. I mean, if you don't even understand where you live and you don't understand the process and you don't understand what is going on.
I, I think it's important to appreciate as well that you could live in Bay Shore and you have a right to be here and, and want to weigh in on this. This is not, this is not an issue that is owned by, you know, the Star Hill neighborhood. Because this is, this is something that could overflow into Channel View. You know, there's a lot of undeveloped land in there, so. I'm in Star Hill North.
That's my point. The covenants protect you. There can be no such development.
Isn't, I make a motion to vote?
Okay, so, so here's what we're going to do. I, somebody, somebody just made a motion. I'm going to ask everybody to please, please respect the process, okay?
May I ask one question?
We're, we're, somebody just made a motion and we're going to entertain that motion. Sarah just made a motion to change, to take a vote on the, the text amendment change. Do you have a second? Sure. The text says that, uh, the text change would be that a townhouse is a, is a principal structure containing two or more single family attached dwelling units, with each unit on its own individual lot. No unit shall be connected by more than two sides by common walls. All setback and dimensional requirements of the zoning district will apply to the overall development. No individual unit should be, shall be required to meet the minimum lot size or dimensional requirements.
What was the change?
The change is to include that definition.
Yes. So that's, that is what would, that is the change for R30. Yes, that's what we're getting ready to vote on. Okay, now.
That are not defined as including town.
It's evaluated by the Board of, us and then the Board of Commissioners, but on a case-by-case basis.
Well, so, so currently in the U D O, single family dwellings are permitted by right. All you have to do is just, is just, I don't want to say all you have to do, but permitted by right means that if you want to build a, a single family dwelling and your plan meets all of the requirements in our U D O, then you are permitted by right, right? Nobody, nobody's going to, you know, tear apart your plan and say they don't like this, they don't like that, like, like they, they have the ability to do in the special use. So basically what this means is it's, it's, it's adding townhomes to a permitted by right. But that's what we're, that's what we're, that's what we're getting trying to vote on.
Just got one question. This text, does it make Bill Cisco 320 Behealane, Star Hill North? If this goes through, does this make it easier to build townhomes or more difficult?
Totally easy.
Yeah.
So it makes it easier?
Yes.
To build multiple, multiplexes?
There you go, people.
Thanks, brother.
To be inside 166 signature that I've gotten over the last couple of days. That people are in, in Star Hill, Pine Lake, I haven't even gotten, I've been a one day a day trying to do this. And there are tons of people that have reached out to me to try to.
Or else we can't hear you.
There are tons of people that have reached out from me to sign this petition for y'all to know how they feel. And I came here tonight to, to let them know that I give them a voice. And, and I, they are all opposed.
Is this petition in regard to the text change or is your petition in regard to the 22 townhouse project?
The 22 townhomes, the, the text change, everything.
We are not there yet.
Okay.
We're trying to get there. Okay? Yes, please.
So the point of clarification I want to provide is that, as currently stands, the issue with considering townhomes as, what I think you heard clearly tonight is, is kind of arguable whether they fall within that single family use. It's a single family attached, but you know, does it fall under the general single family? And so under your R30 district to allow single family use, potentially that could be considered a use of right already. That's, that's the concern. And so the reason why there's a proposal for a text amendment is because by placing, defining townhomes and placing them squarely under a permitted use, you're forcing each townhome development to go case by case under scrutiny before the Board of Commissioners and before the planning board, as we're doing tonight. And so that, in that case, makes it more difficult, makes the, the, more difficult to jump through as far as.
I don't think I understand that. It sounds to me that if it's permitted, if it's a P in that table of permitted uses, it's, it's allowed. It's already allowed.
What, what the text amendment does here, you'll see, add townhome, add townhouse as a special use in the R30 residential zoning district. So it's not, it's not making it a permitted use. It's making it a special use, which means it has to go through the special use permit process. Which means that it has to, that now by definition, if this is approved by the Board of Commissioners, townhome has to go through the special use permit process. The reason why this is before sunning is because this developer has chosen to put it forward through the special use permit. But I think what the concern of the town was, the town manager was and attorney was that without a definition, because townhouse isn't currently in the U D O as it stands, without a definition of townhouse as a special use, it is arguable because it is a single family attached use, that it could fall into that R30 anyway. And that, that could lead to some, some litigation. And that, that could lead to some, some litigation.
And rewrite the definition.
Well, so, I don't know how, how we could see it that way. Because in the R-30 zoning district, it isn't just a matter of how big a lot is and how big a setback is. There are a lot of other conditions that a townhouse simply will not meet. Okay? Because you, and it says it right here, we've taken out the whole requirement to meet setbacks for individual lots. So I do think that there is room for this board to, to start crafting some language to allow, or I don't wanna use the word townhouse because that's a style, but, but the, the idea of single-family attached dwellings and using the terminology of zero lot lines, so people understand exactly what that means. Now, we, we haven't gotten there and we, but we need to. So I think this is premature.
I just, that, that's the board's decision, that's a political decision. I'm not putting my weight in on that decision. I'm just trying to clarify what the concern implies is.
Right.
That's all I'm doing. I'm not weighing in either way.
The primary purpose of this text amendment is to clear up any ambiguity that might exist currently in the UDO. That's all it is. And, you know, what you're told to do, look at a table of permitted uses, and a lot of times, the recommendation would be to pick the closest use if something is not listed. You're gonna pick the closest use that aligns, you know, if it's something that isn't listed in that table, you're picking what the closest use is. If this, if townhouses by definition are considered, considered a single-family dwelling, your closest use would be a single-family dwelling, which is a permitted use in the R-30. This relieves any of that ambiguity and provides that the process is a special use permit process, which is a far more restrictive process than simply a permitted use. That would just be an internal review, just like a regular house would come through. I think this adds the greatest degree of latitude for the Board of Commissioners to place specific conditions on a development that address concerns that might arise with any of the factors that are included in the special use permit. That's the idea is really we're addressing any ambiguity that might exist.
You think we have an interview? You have a lot of interviews?
Now, that's a, now she makes, she makes an excellent point. If we're making text changes based on the 27 people standing here, why, why aren't we making text changes that, that calls out specifically single-family detached and that we have a, another category entirely for single-family attached?
You already have that category. Multi-family, I mean, so another avenue that a townhouse uses a rezoning to our...
Our ten multifamily has conditions. It has, it has lot size.
It does, and that could be another, you know, that could be another avenue.
But in our 30, the lot size is 20,000 square feet. And, and this is saying it's no longer valid. So it doesn't have to be, we're, we're throwing out the whole need to have a 20,000 square foot lot requirement in, in the...
Not for the overall development, but for the specific underneath that townhouse. The townhouse, the building of the, the attached townhouses as a unit still have to meet the setback requirements. The overall parcel still has to meet the minimum lot size requirements.
Well...
That, nothing changes with that.
I, I totally disagree.
You're welcome to disagree with the opinion of the town manager in the town 30. That is perfectly right to do that. We're just here to provide our, our opinion on it and do that information what you like.
Now, I can't talk, I can't stand too much longer. I would like to know why, when you spent a year writing up this UDO and everything, townhomes were not addressed.
They were addressed.
They were addressed directly then, I guess.
Yes. Single-family attached homes were addressed and the future land use plan addressed it. And if we wanna pull that up, that picture up, it's very clear where we would, where we would put that. It was addressed.
What we said was, I'll tell you right where I'm at. If we're gonna do this, gotta be zoned for this thing, we pick it up and carry it, that's how it needs to be done. It's been established since 1973. Okay? That's the way it's been done in there. And then, the people buy these homes on a golf course, they have expectation. Everybody around them, the same family, it's all kind of the same kind of stuff, houses and all that stuff. But this is, this is a clear departure. We handled this in the past by zoning an area for that. Now, I can see areas in the triangle where this could fit very nicely. And I think that is the process that we ought to use to do that. I think, and I took the question of the attorney, so you are saying if this text, that, this text was approved, that it doesn't negate the use for special permit, but the special use permit would leave for any other multifamily townhouses or whatever you wanna, would have to use a special permit process?
So what, what we're saying in, in the way that this is before you tonight is technically anything can come before the board as a special use and the board, you know, makes a decision about whether it's...
Approved or not.
Well, in this case, y'all are advising the, the board on whether it's consistent. However, in this case, this would specifically add, townhouse as a type of use that has to come before the board and go through the specific, the special use permitting process.
Okay, which brings me right to the point, and item three, this board sitting up here has almost no authority in this question. Right now, now we're, we'll try to get, but we don't.
So we have a motion and a second.
So we have a motion and a second on, on this text change to add townhouse to the R-30 zoning district.
I'm concerned about this being put to a vote, right? Because I read the English language, says exactly opposite of what our council is recommending to us.
Yep.
And I'm not gonna make a decision based on, on that. I mean, my gut says that this is adding, yes, not cleaning up. It's too broad to just lump it in with R-30 and then just say that we're gonna deal with it, you know, with different conditions. In my opinion, everything that we've been trying to do here in terms of keeping our very pristine for single-family detached, to vote yes on this text amendment seems to be muddying the water out of it, to me. And so if we put this to a vote as we're being asked to, I, I think we're unknowingly stepping into the jaws of something we're not fully understanding.
Comment on that, if I could? If we vote to reject this text amendment, then it does not go into the plan and we have the opportunity to rewrite it with better and clearer terms.
Well, we are, was the motion to accept the change or reject the change?
Unreliable recommendation.
So we are voting, we are voting to reject the change. Are you comfortable with that?
That, that would be, that would, if you put it the other way, you'd need a no vote. To the state of the country, how we can clean it up.
Okay.
You need to read that, before we do this, you need to read that thing. So that we, that's a great point. The way you stated it, you say yes.
I would check.
To get it up.
So, so the, so, so the motion is to reject the, the change to the UDO, which adds townhouses to the R-30 zoning district. Are we clear?
The attorney say that they should, it just stated upon on a case-by-case basis and then it's one town employee and a developer.
No, you're talking about two different things now. We've already voted on, on that other issue, the special use process. So a show of hands to reject the text change adding townhomes to R-30. One, two, three, four, five, so six.
Further discussion is needed.
Exactly.
Well, further discussion is needing, needed to come up with language for townhouses, which is not off, the townhouses are not off the table. Right? We've got to get to the point where we can, we can put the, some parameters together for that. Okay? I, I, I know that I, one of the things that we talked about at last meeting is the things that we have to change in the UDO. And certainly, I think one of the things that we need to do is add single-family attached dwelling to the existing table of permitted use. We need to, we need to add, can we do this this evening? Can we make that vote now to add the word attached to single-family attached in the table of permitted use, when it seems to me that it's implied and it stays in, within the spirit of the, the table of permitted and special uses? Because it talks about duplexes, it talks about multifamily, and then it talks about single-family. Right? Because as we go, as we go on in this package, we're gonna start talking about townhouse projects as multifamily. So I, I think it makes sense that we, that we add the word detached to the existing single-family dwellings, to, to remove confusion. And the, and the, and the other town attorney was kind enough to send me David Owen's little excerpts that, and I read through that. And what it said was, be as specific as possible in your ordinances to avoid any confusion and lawsuits and, you know, everything else. So that's what we're trying to do here. So can we do that tonight? Can we make that recommendation to the board? It's a clarification of the existing, is this existing table of permitted use? As far as what we do with the townhouse language, we will have to do, we will have to discuss that first. And I'm just talking about the existing table of permitted uses.
Typically, a text amendment would be drafted similar to this and then brought to the planning board and Board of Commissioners for consideration. I mean, it typically would be an agenda item that would be included as well. I guess you could amend the agenda essentially to add it on there and then you could determine exactly what verbiage you would utilize. But still, it would have to go to the Board of Commissioners for...
We understand that.
So wherever that discussion goes tonight, it doesn't necessarily have any bearing on any of the other agenda items.
Right. Okay, yeah.
Should we wait on that? You're saying define a single-family as detached, you know, is basically what you're saying.
Well, I am, I am prepared to make a motion to, and a vote, to add the word detached to the existing table of permitted uses under single-family. So instead of dwelling single-family, which is permitted in all of the residential districts, it will read, which is what the spirit of this table is.
Yeah, I got you.
It will read dwelling, single-family detached.
Turn it on.
Yeah. So I, I am making that motion. Is there, can I get a second? So the motion is to approve, advancing to the Board of Commissioners for approval, the word detached under, in the table of permitted special uses, under dwellings, single-family. So it will read dwellings, single-family detached.
Yeah.
Okay, did I, do we have a second?
A second.
Neil, seconds, can I get a show of hands to advance that to the Board of Commissioners? That is six, nothing? Okay? Okay, so, we are now on to, on number six, which is a special, special use permit for Pine Lake. He says a lot to this. Do, who's, who wants to brief this? Zach, do you wanna do it? Do we want the developer to do it? Do you want me to do it? Is it, is it this memorandum? I'm actually, I'm actually looking at, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm looking at the one for Jalen Ocean. So it is the memorandum for special use permit, R-30 zoning district, this? I think they were reversed actually in the package, that's why it got me a little... Yeah. Okay, so the memorandum background is, is this. This application was received on May 18, 2022, in regard to the zoning district. It is the R-30 zoning district, which is a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, lot width is 70 feet, front yard setback is 40, side yard setback is 10, and a side yard of 10 feet required for a garage or other permitted accessory building located 20 feet or more from the front line of the principal building. An additional 10-foot setback is required on the side street, rear yard is 40, all accessory structures shall adhere to the minimum rear yard setback of 10 feet from the property line. So basically what that means is if you gotta have a 40-foot yard, but if you have a shed, the shed can be 10 feet from the property line. Right?
And 20 feet back from the front line of the house.
Yes. So this, it, this is, this is the clincher for me here. I'm, it is important to note that this zoning text amendment applies to 320 Star Hill Drive in the R-30 zoning district. The applicant has requested the addition of multifamily as a permitted use at 320 Star Hill Drive, R-30 residential zoning district. I'm, I don't know. I think that...
We already answered that.
Yeah, we already, we already answered it. On the statement of consistency underneath, it says that the planning board finds the proposed text amendment is consistent with section 4-1 of the 2007 Camel Land Use Plan. And I'm guessing that that was either a cut and paste issue or, you know, from an, from an old one, but we have a new land use plan. So, the new, the newest land use plan is on February of this year. Right?
Yeah, I think the, there was some discussion in terms of, I believe the coastal resources commission has approved the Camel Land Use Plan, however the Board of Commissioners did adopt the comprehensive plan. So it's, the Camel Land Use Plan has still not been approved by the CRC. So you could theoretically use the 2007, 2007 Camel Land Use Plan, make an argument to use the current adopted comprehensive plan, because the comprehensive plan was adopted by the Board of Commissioners, but the Camel Land Use Plan component is still pending consideration by the coastal resources commission. So that's where there's some, probably some...
Yeah. So I want, I want everybody to understand, this is from the town, to, to us, okay? To the planning board. The recommended action is that the planning board shall review the application materials and develop a statement of consistency that shall address the consistency or inconsistency of the proposed text amendment with the town's comprehensive plan, the Camel Land Use Plan. So that, that seems to be a little out of kilter with the statement that we just had above that, that you said, why would we be using it? So, so are you, although this, you want us to say that the statement of consistency is the 2007 land use plan, your requested action is that it be within the comprehensive plan?
I think you made the argument to utilize one or the other. I mean, you could use the comprehensive plan, but it wasn't adopted by the Board of Commissioners. I think that would be... I think that would be the decision. That's what we were talking about earlier, was what you plan to use. Because it is kind of a unique situation where it's not yet been approved by coastal resources.
Well, I, I certainly, I, I certainly would want to, I would want to present a statement of consistency with the newly adopted land use plan. Sure.
So, I'll just keep telling the 346 for Hill Lane, Star Hill North. Why couldn't you use the second version of the draft that's on your website right now? It's a second version of a draft.
Oh, no, no, those are, those two drafts that are on the website, what, it was, there was some little changes between the first draft and the second. Both of them were the new one.
Okay.
For February. This is from 2007.
Where is that?
It, it's not even on there. That's what I'm saying. It doesn't really, it doesn't really seem pertinent considering that we have the new land use plan, whether, whether it's uh, version one or version two.
I just feel like it's. Well, if it's not available, it's.
So I, I, I think that's something we have to agree is that on, is which land use plan we want to be consistent with.
Is it the expectation that the one that the board approved is going to be accepted and adopted?
That would seem, it would seem that way to me, and the request of action would seem that way as well.
You gotta go with that.
Okay, so, so let's, let's make that pen change to, uh, to this and say that it's the newly adopted 2022. Uh, one that we're, we're being consistent with. Yeah. Adam? Yeah.
But I just want to remind us that although the board of commissioners has approved it, technically, it has not been, been approved by the CRC, the coastal resources commission. So are we getting ourselves in deep water? If, we have the expectation it's going to be approved. And there's a lot of upset in the country right now because of, of action to overturn what has been considered to be law up until now. And, I mean, I don't want to, I'm just saying it hadn't been approved by the people who ultimately have to approve it. The 207 land use, 2007 land use plan has been approved, and that was the point they were making. It, that's been approved, and that's what the staff gave us.
If that was the case, I mean, if we can't even access the, the 2007 one, we wouldn't be able to make a decision on either of these two special uses, because we wouldn't even be able to see it. I have a printed copy, but I don't have the whole thing of it, so we would just have to move them. So I, I don't think that's what we're going with tonight.
Well, so we're, we're talking about consistency with the document. The doc, the document exists. Whether or not it's been approved by KAMA, I don't think changes whether or not, what document we're referencing, and that's what we're doing here. And that's what I would like to clarify is exactly which document are we claiming consistency with? And I think we should call out the 2022 newly adopted one, regardless of what. I, I don't think KAMA is going to get involved with our decisions about townhouses.
No.
So I think, I think we're safe. Okay. Zach, um, can we pull the? So this is going to start getting boring for the people in the audience, because we're going to be looking at stuff that you guys cannot see. Zach, can you start pulling, pulling up each page at a time as we go through it? Uh, yeah, let's start with, um, John McLean's engineering letter. And while you're doing that, who's going to answer these questions? Is it John? Are you going to answer the questions? So, so, um, you called out 44 parking spaces. You've also asked for, um, uh, you've indicated multifamily, um, but multifamily would be two and a half parking spaces per unit.
So what I would tell you is we're doing the best we can for eliminating, we've got a lot of things to work out. Stormwater and with environmental help.
Right.
And so we, we just put this together as best we could, and we'll, we'll do parking hours.
Do you, do you think that there is ample space there to put in an additional 22 spaces? No, it wouldn't be 22. It's two and a half spaces, so that would be 11 more spots. You doubt it? Okay.
I'm sorry, I did not know two and a half.
Well, if we're, that's for multifamily. And, and the reason I ask that is be, um, the other, what we're going to be talking about later, the, the next property does have two and a half. So, um, and that's, those, the differences are, are we, are we going to call this multifamily and, and use those conditions? Or are we going to, are we going to call this single family, which would be two parking spaces? And multifamily would be two and a half, because it's the expectation that people would be visiting. And that is not, there's no driveway to pull in like there is in. So, uh, do you have a septic permit on file? No? Okay.
I mean, it takes, it takes weeks and weeks, man.
Right.
To get them out here, and we, we don't, we need the, we can do this before we pay them $800.
Now, isn't, I, I know before it was a requirement that there be a septic permit on file with the county prior to issuing a, a permit. Is that, has that changed?
The same thing.
Thank you. Yeah, and I guess.
Well, no, for commercials, any commercial, anything.
With the commercial site plan process when we were doing CSPs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was a requirement.
So has that changed?
I don't believe it's something that, especially use permit processes, looking at some of those other factors, we'll get to.
Okay.
More so than whether that exists at the time that the special use permit is approved or not. I think that's, it's more focused in that direction, but.
What, have you done a, how was the special use request made? So Zach, I just saw it in your, in that memo that you provided, but I didn't see anything from the, where it said that the applicant, this is it.
This is the application.
Yeah, the applications and things, but not good enough. There's a letter that accompanies that from a.
Where it's, John. There is.
So immediately following the letter is the application.
What, what I'm asking is, this, this memo from the town is asking for multifamily. But I don't see that in this letter. Um, that's what I'm asking is how did, how did that? Because, because multifamily is another zoning district, folks. That's why I'm being a pain here. Right? It's multifamily is just a, a departure from, from the way, what, what we've been building in town.
So I'm not going to pick the memo apart.
No, I'm just asking.
Put that together.
Okay.
You know, I honestly, I didn't have an opportunity to review it, so if there's any questions in there, I apologize for that. But, um, it was put together by the staff. I'm not going to nitpick that. You know, I think we understand what the purpose is, which is to determine is it a, is it consistent or inconsistent with.
As multifamily or as single family?
That's what we need to arrive at, as opposed to picking apart the stuff.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not picking it apart. I'm trying to understand who, who is asking for multifamily, because it's a different, multifamily has its own zoning category. And that, that's why I'm asking that. But I'm, I'm honestly wondering why we, why we haven't considered, why, why they haven't considered R 10 instead of, instead of R 30. So it seems like it would be a lot easier, but.
And maybe that's, you know, that could be the next step they go.
Yes. Um.
Since the applicant didn't put in multifamily, that was a separate issue. You're supposed to go on the basis of the application.
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, we talked about special uses, our land uses that are generally compatible with other land use permitted than, by right in the zoning district, but which require individual review of their location, design, and configuration to evaluate or minimize the potential for adverse impact on adjacent property and users. Special uses ensure the appropriateness of the use at a particular location within a given zoning district. Using, uses requiring a special use permit are noted in the table of permitted and special uses. A use not identified in the table of permitted uses, uh, or that fits the character of the zoning district but does not fit the precise dimensions of the zoning district may apply for a special use permit. It is the intent of this section to only permit special uses that do not have adverse impacts on the health, safety, general welfare of the town, and that are consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. Do we have, do we have the future land use plan from our, our recently adopted land use plan? It's right there on the end. Oh, no, that's, that's a zone, is that the zoning or not? Um, so that future land use map looks pretty clear to me. If it's orange, it is medium density, which we're calling mixed use. Um, and if it's yellow, it is low density. And for you folks out there, if it's red, it is commercial, and if it's blue, it's government, like the school or town hall or that type. So for those of you, if you cannot see well enough where the orange is, it is, um, you know, it's a pretty good chunk there. Uh, that includes what is currently the commercial district. Here we're Lowe's and, you know, and all of that. Regarding what? This, this is orange in here, okay? This is the whole town, so this would be 58, this is 24, and this is Jell-O Notion. And when we talk about the triangle, this is the triangle that we're talking about. So anything in here, which is like where Lowe's and all of that is, this is Arden Oaks, here this young. This in here would be Mac Daddy's, Lowe's, um, all of that, and you're so. Right? So that's, now there's still some, some actual commercial buildings in here, you can see the red. And then there was also an area here, uh, which is just behind Carolina Hill, which is a large piece of property. It's about 17 and a half acres. And that is also, also has been, um, deemed, uh, using it for. Can you click off that thing, Zach, so they can? I don't think it's a touch thing. Okay? So, so if we're talking about consistency with the comprehensive land use plan, this, this is what we, this is what we should be looking at, right? And I think, is this chapter, there is a section in here that talks about using this map in order to approve or disapprove, approve or deny a, any development. It's very specific in this land use map, it is, or in this, in this land use plan, to use this map in order to make a determination. So I think that's important that we, you know, if we, if we're trying to stay consistent with this document, then let, then look, then that's what we need to be looking at.
The blue school makes an L. What is on the bottom? It's kind of a blank white spot. Is that? Anything?
The library.
No, on the bottom, on 24. Oh, okay.
What's where, I thought it's vacant, more planned, not the developed, um, for necessity.
So basically where we just built the walkway over the water.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So.
Say, so basically when we talk about townhomes and it's about five units an acre, that would be considered medium density. And when we look at this map, the only place for medium density is in that triangle.
So.
To clarify.
So we have not, the town has not determined yet what medium density is. But generally, if you start digging into it, medium density is, uh, does not go below 5,000 square foot per lot. You know, per dwelling, you know, so, you know, for footprint. Um, and, and our existing, um, right now, the lowest, the lowest density, or the highest density we have is 79, one. Which is basically, you could put a duplex on the house on the neighborhood. It's basically kind of what that, that comes out to. Um, Zach, do you, do we want to keep going through this individually? So we talked about parking spaces right now. They're asking for two and a half. Uh, there will be only one entrance, um, uh, you know, on and off of Star Hill Drive. Uh, stormwater. Uh, this is where we went back to what, what we had talked about in the last two meetings, about two inches of retention, and this is one and a half. So my recommendation to, had been that we go with what the engineers that we talked to recommended, which was an inch and a half, which is also the state requirement, but you felt that two inches was.
Say waters, uh, if it's square feet, fresh water on that, if it's S A waters, the retention standard's higher. So, um, it's my, I'm not sure where this property sits, but that is another consideration, so.
So what is, what does S A?
Um, I think it's shellfish.
Okay.
I can pull it up, uh, let me see.
So, but at, at this point, we don't, we don't know if inch and a half is, so that's something they would have to.
So they're going to be required to get a state stormwater permit, so they're.
Okay.
They're going to be subject to those requirements that are put forth by state.
But that's, and we're good with that. We're not going to try and go over the state requirement on the, on the retention, are we?
Whereas, where a state's stormwater permits required, I don't know, it's probably some gray area about whether we could exceed that requirement. I think what we were aiming for when we were talking about the stormwater ordinance was to address those situations where it was a single-family dwelling and it was smaller than what a state, you know, permit would address.
Okay.
I think those are two, you know, two separate conversations on that.
I, so that, you know, that, what the planning board gets concerned with is what does this do? What does an individual project do to the, what our plan is for the rest of, of town? So the next thing, it, you know, talks about buffer. And if you look at our, our, our U D O, there's like more in there about buffer than is anything else, and it's so crazy specific. Um, so in this case, it, it talks about the property is buffered on three sides by a wooded section owned by the golf course. The rest of the property runs along Pine Lake and Star Hill. Units will be built with hardy siding, with attractive accents, covered entrances, and covered back porches. The height will not exceed 40, which is within the U D O. Um, and a landscape architect will be consulted to beautify the property, and any landscape will be provided. So, um, so we, my, my question here would be, are, are, we do not have to have the buffer between required zones, right? Because this will all be the same. So the property that sits south is a residential lot. So that residential lot, if whoever owns that, I can pull it up, because I got the G I S open. What? Next to it? That's your lot? Oh, this, I'm sorry. It's not for sale?
Yes.
The lot that we're talking about? I'm talking about after you turn, the lot. This is the lot, this is the lot I'm talking about. Okay. So. So that lot that is next to this, um, is a, is a residential lot. And this, and there's, oh, I'm sorry. That's used. I thought it was south. Um.
This is.
Yeah. Um, which is another consideration. When you look at, when you pull this up on the, on the G I S, you see that all of the lots around that 4.4 acres is, is vacant and then directly across the street are what? There's one, yeah, but there's a lot between it. There's one, there's a house here, but there's no house here. There's no house here. No house here and no house here. But if. I need a, and then Zach, if you, if you can, if you can hold down, so. I wish I had a laser pointer. I should have one. So this lot is vacant. This lot is vacant. This lot is vacant. This lot is vacant. This is the four acres. This lot is vacant. Can you pull that? This lot is vacant. I'm sorry, this lot's not vacant. This lot here, directly across the street, it's about 13 and a half acres. So, so that, those are the considerations as the, the planning board. We will look at this and say, how big can this thing get? So when I look at this and I see this is 4.4, 22 townhouses, right? This is the four little ones that are currently there now. It's a non-conforming use. Here is another vacant lot, but this lot here that extends all the way up Star Hill is, is about 13 and a half acres. It's what? It's on townhomes. Yeah. So, and, and here's, and here's where, here's where we need to consider. What, what is the safety and, and the welfare of the town? Again, I'm in Star Hill North, the land of sidewalks, and I love that. This has no sidewalks. You know, oh, you, so, so that, that to me is a, you know, that is a, that is an intense density in there. Um, and that is a concern for me as, as a member of the. Well, it's definitely a conflict. It definitely is not consistent with it because it's outside the triangle. Our, our job is an advisory role to the Board of Commissioners is to determine whether or not, from a technical perspective, whether or not this project or any project, any development is consistent with the existing land use plan. Yeah. So.
So if it seems to me your job is done, you already said goodbye.
Yeah.
If that, that land use plan is low density and clearly this special use is going to provide.
Well, that's the rub for me, right? Because I think that there is a really good opportunity. And we talked about this all the way through the process of a land use, that there are really good opportunities to develop single family attached homes. At some point, I'm going to want to move out of my two-story home and move into something smaller with a postage stamp for a front lawn. And I, I don't want to have to leave my hometown to do that. No, I don't. I want, I, I want like a patio home, right? This is what we've talked about for quite some time. And that is the idea of what would go into that triangle. But because of the issue of septic, that had to be contained within the triangle and keep the load and keep everything else low density. So that's kind of what was presented to us by the experts of this is what, this is what you can do. You know, this is what, this is, this is our recommendation to you. So. Anyway, so that's, Zach, can you make it just a little smaller so they can see that 13 and a half acres? That's a crazy busy corner. If you live up there, you know that, that if you hang out there long enough, you see everybody. So, so can we, I'm, I'm going to go with the boards. Folks, folks, can we, can I hear for the rest of the board? Mike, folks, I'm going to ask you to.
Yeah, I just want to point something that is concerning to me. This piece of property right here, which is owned by Star Hill. All, all of this fairway, we had a situation really dry this spring. And this pond completely dried. I hadn't seen that before. But when I went over here, I've got chastise for it, but there's standing water down in here, two little ponds. And the elevation, the outflow is under Star Hill Drive and that hasn't seen water ever. Because the elevation is so deep in those ponds, it's 10 to 12 feet. Elevation change. So my concern with this, 22, uh, townhomes in the septic system on this, this great falloff in here and this water not flowing, that might be, if K. It's just didn't look good.
Well, we'll keep, keep in mind that the developer is responsible for making this property. That's why they have to have a topographical survey and a whole bunch of other things. The developer is responsible for bringing in hundreds of tons of dirt if necessary and rerouting tributaries and pipes and, and drainage and all that other stuff. It's not like they can just go in there and build it as it is. If they want to invest in that to get this up to speed, then that's, that's for them to decide, right? That's a whole nother story. We can't, we, we have to be careful whose, you know, whose space we get into. Um, but, but I honestly, I am concerned about putting up, you know, units, this many units right next to, right next to homes. Literally, you know, like that poor person, whoever buys that. You know, right? So that, that's a consideration. And I think those type of things can be addressed with buffers. And if it was, if we applied a different, if we, no, no, there could be some pretty heavy duty buffers, believe me. If, if, and we could, we determine that, right? So in the event that this, if this was another zoning category, then that's how it would have to be addressed, right? If, if we said, you know, not good this way, got to be its own zoning category because it's multi-family, then they, then there's requirements for like 30-foot buffers, you know? I'm sorry? I, I guess what I'm trying to say is it is not, it, it is not our job to determine it. It's the, it's the job of civil engineers. I'm sorry? Yes. I do. Of course I do. Well, you know, yeah, when you're a hammer, everything looks like a nail, you know?
Um, we came from the area where all the developments were happening. And our community at that time did not flood at all. And the next, um, community went up, what happened to ours? With engineers, with developers, with everything.
You know, and, and I, I will tell you that we, we understand that. And that's why the town is working to develop new stormwater requirements. Because we are seeing that in places where an entire neighborhood is already developed. And then somebody comes in, there's one lot left. Somebody comes in and builds a giant house with a lot of roof line and, and their, their lots is, is dry, but all of their neighbors' lots are wet. And the town staff is working with engineers and, and the planning board to make sure that that doesn't happen. Those are the things we're addressing.
Our community had been there since 1994 and Perry Hill Farms came next to us. It just, just built in 2019, 2020 during the pandemic. And all of Jones Dairy now floods tremendously. And that is something that can occur with those 13 acres, with those four acres. We really have to think about, if this is already a low-density zone, why are we rezoning it?
We're, we're not. That's.
But, but when you're saying you're going to consider the townhomes, and I'm sure that it's already been passed because I feel like everything we're saying is falling on deaf ears.
Please, I don't want people to think that this has not passed. This is, this is, we are nowhere near there. We are at the point only of the developer presenting their ideas and, and then, and then coming to the planning board to determine if it fits in our land use plan. That's where we're at. I, I, it, it breaks my heart to hear that people in, in town think that this is already done and somebody's trying to hoodwink you. That is not the case. It really is.
That, that's, you can't blame people for the trouble.
No, I, I agree. I, I agree. I, I, I think that, I, I'm just asking you to keep, nobody is trying to hoodwink you. If you have a question about where the plan is, if you call town hall, they would direct you to the, to the plan. This is a, yeah, this is a, it is a very small staff and there, and they, and there's a lot of work to do. So keeping up with the website, unfortunately, you know, we, you know, maybe we need to hire somebody else to, to help keep up with. Because, because we're getting where, you know, we're, we're more digital centric and, and we, so we need to, we need to consider that. Yeah. So, um, another, another concern I had was, uh, where, where is the plan for the entrance and the exit? It just says Star Hill. My concern is that if it's too close to that four-way stop, that gets a little iffy, right? You know, two, you know, with the stop start. And that, if you put, if you put 22 homes there, it's going to be a school bus stop. So that, that is just a consideration. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, that really sound, so you mean, so like one in and, like an in and an out? Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. So we should probably make sure that that's out of, out of this memorandum then. Okay. Um.
So, excuse me. Uh, Tom Rutterman, Star Hill Drive.
Yeah.
Again. Um, I guess my question to you is, if you don't have a CAMA report, if you don't have, you don't know whether the ground's going to perk, you don't know any of all this other stuff, how can you make an educated recommendation to the Board of Commissioners? Because you don't, you don't have any of the information. Now, I understand it costs the developer to, to money to get these things done. There's engineers that need to get involved. The county's got to get involved. There's a whole lot of things that have to get involved here. And I just don't understand how you folks as a board can make an educated recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
So I, I think it's, it's important for everybody to understand that we, we are talking about concept here. There are, and you could ask developers and any of these engineers, there are a million opportunities to stop these programs in, with these projects in its track because they can't meet some of these requirements, especially from the county.
Right. But you're talking about a special use permit here. If, if, if you go forward with the recommendation on a special use permit, let's say you recommend it to the Board of Commissioners. And they say, yeah, let's go ahead. Now there's a special use permit out there before all the facts are known. And that's the only thing I'm trying to bring up. Because, you know, there's a lot of toes that could get stubbed, uh, if, if some ball gets dropped along the way. I'm just trying to protect you all and protect the city and, you know, I mean, the last thing y'all want to do is go to court and have to drag this, you know? You don't, you don't want to do that. And I'm just, I'm, I have my own feelings on the development, but I'm just, don't think there's enough factual evidence out there to, to either say yay or nay.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to ask John to step up to the microphone because he is the engineer on, on a lot of these.
I am one of the.
One of the engineers.
So I would, in deference to this gentleman, we have employed a surveyor to survey the property, a licensed soil scientist to bore the property, to find out where the water table was, to do all the work that we needed to do for the sewer system particularly, but for everything else. So there, there's more that's been done than, than you know about. And I, I just wanted to make.
Thank you. And, and this, for, for that reason, this is, this is why I say at some point, we just have to accept an engineer's stamp. Because we just, we can't say, you know, the engineers all say that, you know, but Susan thinks they're wrong. You know, I, you know, we, it's, it's not realistic. That's why we rely on, you know, on certifications. Um, explain how the proposed use will not be noxious or offensive. And says these are homes, they will be like every other single family dwelling in Cape Codderet, specifically the condominiums less than 250 feet directly north. So. Um, those condominiums are, is, is non-conforming, right? And you can't even see them. Yeah. Although the ones on Taylor and Ocean, you see. So. Yeah. When the least. Um, the, uh, we believe this project will improve the surrounding area with well-built, well-maintained golf course. I'm sorry? Um, we, the golf course facing townhomes while providing much-needed housing for our town. Here's, here's my question. Is there, it said golf course facing, but you don't really mean that that's going to, that the front of these is going to face the golf course? So if you're driving, if you live across the street on Star Hill Drive, where this gentleman here lives, if he looks, looks across the street, is he going to see the back of somebody's home? Okay, that, that's what I mean. Because this says facing the golf course and I'm asking if it. The back. So if they were on their deck, they would be on the golf course. Okay. Okay. Um, the, the other question I had, when I, when I look at the plan, I see, um, it looks like 20 feet wide. Each lot is 20 feet wide by 40 feet deep. Is that the lot or are you talking about, is that the footprint of the dwelling? So what is the lot size?
I, I mean, typically the 15 feet out the front and 30 feet out the back will buy you, you know, the width of the house.
Yeah. So the reason I'm asking is because our existing ordinance calls out 7,920 feet per dwelling. If you do, if you do the calculations. Oh, when I did it, it worked. It worked for 24. When I, when I did the calculation, it did work. No, I'm talking about, that, that's the footprint of the home. I'm, I'm talking about the lot itself because these will be individual, these will be sold as individual lots. Because these will be individual, these will be sold as individual lots. Because they're, they're single-family dwellings. They're not going to be, it's not like the condominiums across the street, which are like, you know, 20 by something.
So even if you went 20 feet out the front, 20 feet out the back, that's another 800. 1,600 square feet is not, no, 7,000.
So you're saying you could make it?
I don't think it would work.
Oh. So that's an issue, right? Because we've got to figure out, you know, how do we make sure you're meeting the minimum requirement for everything else in town? Right? Which is, which is that 7,920? It's in the UDO. Yeah, it's. That's the low, that's the highest density that we have in town. The highest density we have in town is 7,900 square feet.
But this is not multi-family.
Well, even for, even for single-family, there's requirements, so.
Yeah. She's referring to the standards where they are to multi-family, so I think that's what she's referencing.
That is. My point is that we do need to come up with some type of standard. We can't, we can't just say, you know, cover an entire lot from lotline to lotline with housing, with houses, without having some specific density. We've got it, we've got to talk about density. And that's the only way to talk about density is by square footage, per.
We honestly can't talk about 7,900 per feet per lot. You know, that stamp, 20 feet wide, that would have to be 400 feet deep. That would be 8,000. Yes, ma'am.
Where's my? I did. I used, yeah, just to quickly see how many we could get in there. And I came up with 24. But you have to take out.
That's what Susan did.
That's how, yeah, that's how I did it.
That's how she did it. She took, she took 7,920 times 24, 190,000 square feet, divided it by 43,560, and came up with 24. But that's not how you do it.
And the reason for that is because, so for single-family or multifamily, you do that, right? You can't do it with this, because reality is that this is, this is multifamily. So I just think we need to, we need to come up with some numbers for the size of these lots.
But there's no existing requirement for that.
The townhouse, that we know of, the townhouse doesn't have a requirement.
There is an existing requirement. It's R30, it's the requirements in R30.
Doesn't spell it out like.
R30 is 20,000 square feet with a 40-foot setback on front and back and 10 feet on the sides.
Somebody needs to help with this math. Somebody over there needs to help with this math.
We're talking apples and oranges.
Try to boil it up a little bit. But the problem with just taking the total square footage of the lot and then doing that division based off of that is you're not factoring in the space for the parking area. They've got two stormwater infiltration basins that are shown on that plan. So that's what's not being accounted for in that calculation.
Right, so, and my point is that what we're doing here does not work with what we currently have in R30. You can't cram this into R30 with the existing conditions we have for R30. It's a completely different animal.
Madam Chairman, I think that's why we're asking for special use.
So, so how, what is the distance? It said that, what the recommendation was from the town staff for maintaining the existing setbacks for R30, but not for the individual lot. Does that give you, so is that from behind, only the structure out 40 feet?
40 feet, yes, ma'am, and then 40 on the rear.
And 40 feet on the rear. So it's not really the lot that.
No, no.
It's not going to give it to you, it's just from each individual structure.
Yes, ma'am.
So I think that that is a little tight as well. I think it makes sense that it be, that the setback be, you know, we at least get something in there. You know, to clarify this.
Well, you know, that.
Otherwise.
All this discussion begs the issue of having a specified zoning district where all of these things we're talking about is described.
Yes.
We have it for every other existing zoning district that we have. It's this special use permit allows us, if we've got a favorable recommendation from the Board of Commissioners, to superimpose this special use process in this development. It's something we've never dealt with before until this UDO came out. I don't know exactly what you said. What I'm saying, John. It doesn't fit the mold, is what you're saying, right? Pardon me? It doesn't fit the mold.
Of the existing zoning.
Yes, ma'am.
Categories. I think it needs to, we need a new zoning category.
I agree.
Which is something that was brought out during the entire land use.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was what they recommended to us, that we develop, we immediately, that was the word that Anne used, right? The engineer on this, to immediately develop a new zoning category that meets this mixed-use medium density. And we haven't done it, and now we're here.
And now we're, yeah, now we're asked for special use. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, does anybody, does anybody else have anything on the team here?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm Bonnie Hill, I'm Bonnie Hemmerlin, and I live across the street from this. I'm not seeing any standing trees. Is that all parking lot and buildings? And what is the qualifications for such? I mean, in a lot of places, you have to have a footprint, it's only so much, and the vegetation is preserved. Is that going to be the case here?
Well, I don't know what the plan is, but because they are in, if this is approved as an R30 project, then there's no requirement to maintain vegetation between.
Really?
Between lots. If there would be, there's a, there's a lot of information on that if it was a different zoning district. So if we made it a zoning district for that lot, then yes, they would have to put, I think it's 20 feet, might be 30.
All kinds of things.
Like 30 feet of vegetation between screening, buffers, things like that.
So it would be pretty much clear-cut to do the project?
It would be the lot itself? Well, that would be completely up to them, if they wanted to clear-cut it or not.
But isn't, isn't that the way the thinking is? Everybody wants to preserve vegetation, on Emerald Isle, it's that way. Preserve as much as a percentage you should preserve. Do we not have that?
We do not have.
I think it should be considered, especially for this.
I'm sorry?
I said up and down 24, and everything is being clear-cut. There's not a tree in sight.
Okay, so, so there is a requirement on 24 Telenotion, I think 58 as well, that they've got to have a 20-foot vegetative buffer now.
Yeah, for our commercial development, they'd have to meet the buffer requirements. And that prescribes some of that information in terms of plantings, the capacity and all that. And we did, we did talk about the requirement for either tree protection ordinance and some of those things. That did come up in the UDO process, as well as with the land use plan. But I think there was some, there was some pushback on that, is that's why I put it. But that was something staff suggested considering, even to at least start the process of talking about that a little bit further. So that is, it is something that's been thought about and brought up and suggested, it just hasn't.
Yeah, there's a lot of wildlife in there. There are deer that sleep over there. I mean, it just, be ashamed that we keep clear-cutting and not preserve something for them. We've got a lot of wildlife. The other thing I'm concerned about is all the traffic that's already on Star Hill Drive. And that, plus if the development beyond that gets done in a similar fashion, you've got a highway coming through there.
Let me be clear, that there is no plan right now.
I know, but it looks, it looks like it could be the same.
We are, we look out to, you know, situational awareness. What does, what is the potential for this project on other, other potential development in the area?
Thank you.
My name is Silvio, we live at 3, 4, 5 Star Hill Drive. I wish you the best of all, ever, whoever want to do this. Well, I don't want to, neighbor, neighbor, another neighbor, going to see that new development. I don't want to be part of that. And I'm not caring much who going to develop that. But my house is going to be, if that's approved, my house is on sale. And I don't want to be part of that. Because that's, that's the traffic, what we have over there. I already have in my house, what is two times, people hit right sign and post, electric post, it was not a stop on sign. And killed my cat, killed another cat, because of the guy's speeding. And with other 45 or 5500 cars, I don't want to be part of that anymore. Maybe I'm going to lose some money to sell that house, but you know what? I'm going to pay the price for that, but I'm going to zip out if they're going to approve. Because that, and that's going to be domino effect. That gonna be domino effect. And the money gonna talk, whoever have, and I respect any of single of this family, who I know for 25, 6 years I'm here. And not 2 years, 3 years. I know much about anybody. I respect that. I give him, I wish you the best. But it's not my cup of tea to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here from the Channelview neighborhood? I ask that because this has, not this, any changes would, would have an effect on them, not this particular project. So, so we are being asked to vote on a statement of consistency. We don't have a Section 4-1. So what are we, what are we, what are we saying we're consistent with? Can we say whether or not it's consistent with the future land use map?
So I think the, I was doing a little bit more research while we're sitting here. I think the safest route would be to address the consistency or inconsistency with both the adopted and approved 2007 Kamalandys Plan, as well as the comprehensive plan that was adopted by the Board. I think including both of those documents would probably be our safest bet, because there is some statutory language, and that's kind of what we're looking through. That addresses that. So that's our 2007 plan that's on the website.
So as far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, what portion of the comprehensive plan? Would that be the future land use map?
So you could, depending on which direction you're going with, you know, consistent or inconsistent, if you identify a specific section, for instance, you know, if it's the future land use plan map, then you would say, if you felt like it was inconsistent with what was proposed on the future land use map, then you could articulate that.
I do want to be specific.
Or if you felt like it was consistent, you could do it in that fashion. So one way or another, just identify which section that you want to reference.
And can we pull up Section 4-1 of the 2007 Kamalandys Plan and review that?
Yes, yeah. And what I'm referencing, and where there's some confusion is, just in case you want to look it up later, it's in this 160D-501. And that's where I'm thinking it's our best bet to reference both plans, just to be on the safe side.
Because this is saying that the text amendment is consistent with Section 4-1. What, instead of the special use permit?
Yeah, and I think Barbara has it in there as an example of potential verbiage you can utilize. But ultimately, I'd say that the planning board drafts what that is, whether it's consistent or inconsistent. The staff doesn't know which way you're going to go on it, kind of thing. So it's just merely providing a suggested template of how you could approach it. You can change the word consistent, inconsistent, or vice versa. That's up to the planning board to provide that information.
Okay, can we, can we see what that 4-1 looks like, so we know if we're, if we're going to vote on this? You know, we want to. There it is, land use and development goals. Oh, you can't just click on that like the.
Yeah, it's not clickable, so I got to scroll through. So you could go through any of these items. And this is one of the things, you know, we were hoping was improved with our, our new comprehensive Kamalandys Plan, was it was a little bit more detailed and specific, and, you know, there were tangible items that we could kind of rely on. But, you know, that would be that 4.1 land use and development goals section.
The formulation of land use and development goals is based upon Codarette's evaluation that's identified. So is it the existing and emerging conditions from 2007? Or the new existing and emerging conditions?
2007 and 2010.
Yes, I think that's the safest. That way, if one is challenged in terms of validity, you address that challenge already by referencing the other documents. On the 2007.
Oh, low density, 1 to 2 dwellings per acre. Single-family residential is expected to continue to re-inhabit land use in future years. Non-residential land uses are projected to cluster along 24 and 15. Okay, so. So it identifies residential as low-density, single-family, medium-density, single-family, and medium-density, multifamily. And then it goes on to talk about low-density is 1 to 2 dwellings per acre, single-family residential. The type and intensity of projected development varies within each future land use map classification. Future land use. Based upon the analysis of existing land use patterns, natural development constraints and projected land use anticipated 2015 residential land needs cannot be met with the estimated amount of available developers acreage in current Cape Codarette jurisdictions. They were right. Okay.
And I think something to point out, if you look at that paragraph, and this is part of the challenge with that 2007 document, is the future land use map is not intended for site-specific land planning or for regulatory purposes. That's what we got away from in this newly adopted document, was a little bit more specificity. We didn't have necessarily statements like that, which make this more confusing.
Well, in the new land use plan, it is very, it says that it can be used. So, so, go ahead. Well, I was on the 2022 plan, that's why I wasn't on the 2007.
Does one favor or another? Because I would really like to know that. Does one favor one side?
Well, one of the problems that we have is this statement alone is in direct conflict with the 2022 statement. And that's where we run into problems. If we're trying to develop a statement of. If we're trying to develop a statement of consistency using both of these documents, it's just impossible. So if we want to develop a statement of consistency with this, then we can, we can make a statement about that and add language that says, however, it is not consistent with the twenty twenty-two recently, recently developed. So, or I, I promise you that however we write this, it will be clear what we mean. And the Board of Commissioners are smart enough to figure out what we mean. It's not like we're gonna send them something and they're gonna say, oh, consistent, good to go. We, we, we will make sure that, that it is impressed upon them that, that we have been constrained to this document. Because, now, this is, this is an adopted document, right? The twenty twenty-two is adopted by the Board of Commissioners, who is going to be voting on this. Right? I don't think anybody on the board is from twenty, is from 2007, so. So I, I, I think that what we want to do is just make sure that we have the language right and not think that if we say something about 2007, it's that this thing is gonna slide through based on that. There is a million ways, a million reasons to say yes or to say no to this project. We want to get that information all to the Board of Commissioners.
I'll, I'll provide a little bit of additional clarity. So this is what I referenced earlier. This is the North Carolina general statute that would apply to this circumstance. And I'll read it for the folks that can see it up there. If a plan is deemed amended by GS 160D dash six oh five by virtue of adoption of a zoning amendment that is inconsistent with the plan, that amendment shall be noted in the plan. However, if the plan is one that requires review and approval subject to GS 113A dash one ten, the plan amendment shall not be affected until that review and approval is completed. That's referencing that approval process by the Coastal Resources Commission and saying that the plan is not effective until that review and approval is completed. And that's, that's where the concern is originating. There's not one plan more favorable or less favorable. It's trying to make sure we're accounting for any possible situation that might arise. It's just an abundance of caution, because there is some ambiguity in gray area with this. So, and then, you know, it's also, this is a reference to something provided by the school government. It says, KAMA review for a plan that also serves as a land use plan mandated by the Coastal Area Management Act. GS 160D dash five oh one also clarifies that the plan amendment is not effective for KAMA purposes until it goes through the KAMA plan review and approval process. So that's where, that's what we're referencing and that's what the concern is. And that's why the recommendation is to use both plans to develop just to err on the side of caution. Make sure that we're covering our basis on this, so. Yeah, I think that's where we're using both plans. I think we're airing on the side of caution. I think we're giving, you know, so we're paying attention to what was recently adopted by the Board of Commissioners this, this winter. But we're also acknowledging that the 2007 Camel Landes Plan is probably, based on this, the plan that is currently in effect. Granted, I don't know. That's based on the latest information we have, you know, in terms of the Coastal Resources Commission's timeline. And I haven't heard anything new in terms of whether it's been approved through that process. So that's going off of that, but not knowing if, I mean, they could have met today for all we know. You know, it's, we're airing on the side of caution with this.
So, so we're, we, we want to make a statement of consistency or inconsistency with section four dash one. So we need to understand what four dash one, how, how four dash one applies to this. So can you, can you pull that up and help us connect the dots?
Yeah.
I mean, we can easily do that with the new comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
But I think it's worth adding to that statement of consistency regarding the new comprehensive plan that we're addressing the future land use map.
So I think you could go to that table thirty-three, which is land use and development goals, and kind of read through what each of those goals are. If you feel there's inconsistency with those goals, then you can utilize that in crafting your statement. If you feel there's consistency with it, then, or if you feel like it's consistent with those points, then you could reference those points in terms of consistency. So that's what, kind of have to weigh in on, on those points there. Yeah, so it goes. So the first one's about public water access, so that wouldn't necessarily apply. Land use compatibility, balanced growth and development, and conservation slash preservation of natural resources. The second point is promote land use and public infrastructure development that is compatible with lands suitability as well as capabilities to provide requisite public services. And then promote land use and land development compatible with the functional purposes of areas of environmental concern, which this particular pro, I think, project is outside of the AEC. So that, that third point wouldn't apply. And that's part of the challenge with this 2007 plan is it's kind of wording's a little bit open-ended.
Promote land use and public infrastructure development that is compatible with land suitability as well as capabilities to provide. So that's basically, you know, utilities and fire and that. Conserve and maintain natural hazard areas. Maintain and enhance water quality of fossil waters. That's a question, do we know, is, is that, does that water make it to Pettiford or Pettiford Creek? No, wait, I think that does, I think it does go to Pettiford.
I think that probably goes to Vogue Sound.
Vogue Sound?
Yeah, that would come out through Vogue and then out to Vogue Sound, so.
So areas of local concern. We don't have to worry about historic preservation. Provide a variety of housing opportunities. Promote diversified economic development. Does it, is there anything below that, Zach, or is that the end of it?
So that's the end of that table and then go on to table thirty-four.
You know, Susan?
Yeah.
We might table the statement of consistency. We got the other two things. People are getting worn down. We're looking at a lot of people out here.
What? Okay, the, the problem is that if we don't, if we don't send them something within forty-five days, then it's considered approved by us.
You mean to the Board of Commissioners?
To the Board of Commissioners. Yes. Basically, we don't get an opportunity to, to have our say. And, and because everything happens in meetings, we will miss the next, we will miss that opportunity. Remember that our next meeting is, is late in the month. You know, because of Fourth of July. Current residential densities will be maintained in order to preserve the overall low-density character of Cape Carteret's residential areas. Low-density areas will require a minimum lot area of twenty thousand square feet. Minimum-density single-family areas will require a minimum lot area of fifteen thousand square feet. Well, there you have it. Well, the fifteen thousand square feet has changed. Right, we got the new zoning category. Multifamily residential development will be encouraged at a moderate range, moderate density range. Five units per acre. Residential densities and residential developments. Eight dwellings per, per acre. So, Cape Carteret will maintain residential areas that are used exclusively for detached, stick-built, single-family dwellings. Cape Carteret will maintain residential areas that are used exclusively for detached, stick-built, single-family dwellings. Well, we have to go back, we have to remember that R thirty is the lowest density. Another term you could use for the people who live there, and I don't live in that zoning district, would be exclusive, right? So people move into the lowest-density areas because they want that space separating them from their neighbors for privacy or whatever. So, and this seems to, this seems to acknowledge that desire. I don't know if you saw it, I see it. Cape Carteret will maintain residential areas that are used exclusively for detached, stick-built, single-family dwelling.
We do, but it doesn't say we'll maintain all there. It says we will retain areas, which we're doing.
Okay. Um, can I get some input from the board, please? Neil, you got, you got something?
You know, I could basically, the thing that we're talking about is subject interpretation. Talking, 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 and there's no definitive answer. Closest thing I can see is policy ten. I mean, that's the closest thing that we've come to a definitive answer that says is, I mean, because it generally complies. But if we can find an exception where it doesn't comply, then we've got to note that. And then policy ten, it seems to indicate that it does not, it's not saying Cape Carteret will maintain residential areas that are used exclusively for detached, stick-built, family, whole-family dwelling. I mean, the language could have been, make it better. But it's, it's trying to be restricted there.
Sarah?
I agree. I feel like when we look at this from all angles, the 2007 plan, the new plan, our current zoning, it all points to low density in the areas that we're talking about. There's just no way around it, in my opinion.
History speaks for itself. If you look at the town and development of the ordinance and the housing districts that we have, I've been various boards here for, what, twenty-two years now? And I've not seen one like this or one this controversial. Since I've been here, it was, we've always known, we had the R ten M, but very little has happened. When we were doing the land use plan, we looked inside the triangle. And there is where the opportunities to do something like this are. And, and, and I know, Susan, we've talked about this. Someday we want to get on that and figure out a way of how you can go to developer and say, hey, we're willing to consider these kinds of things in this area. But to change an established neighborhood that's been here since seventy-three. And the two exceptions, the, the one condos that's across the street, that preceded the ordinance. And the other one was, I don't know how that other one got in there. The one on Telenotion. Pardon?
It preceded it.
Well, it says it was seventy-five. Okay, well then, whatever is wrong, so they both preceded it. When the county was controlling this. So I, I, I see, there's nothing in me that can change what we've had here since the seventies.
The town encourages the redevelopment of older established residential neighborhoods at the same density and intensity of scale as the currently existing in the neighborhood. Low-density classified areas will require a minimum lot of twenty thousand square feet. Medium-density areas will require fifteen thousand. So, okay, I, actually, there you go.
I'd love to move out of my town home. I didn't have to mow the yard or fix the roof or do things that are made. And I have no plans or desire at this point to develop any of my land within the triangle or townhomes. But I don't rush somebody else doing it. Somebody who wants to move there. I have heard people say to me, Willis, for example, whom I'm one. And I certainly don't enjoy it, but I would love to live closer to people in a townhome development. And have neighbors and be able to do it. Don't want to develop it myself. I don't want to do it right now or be pushed into it. And, and the areas within the, the land use plan that were designated for the high density is my property. So, and the land use plan showed a road cutting through my son's driving range, going under the only sewer plant that, that serves the commercial district. And when I wrote a letter to the, the person who worked for Summit and said, look, this is a pie in the sky plan. You, you don't own the land. You haven't made any, you haven't tried to get a sewer plant to replace the one you're gonna destroy by putting a road through it. It's a pie in the sky. And she wrote back and said, yes, it's a pie in the sky. And it's gonna take a lot of effort and money to, to utilize it. And I'll be darned if the newspaper didn't publish that. Did any of you read that? I, I don't know, but it was just quoted in the newspaper, word for word, so. I don't want to do it myself, but I'd like to see something of this nature done in town. And, and my children are in the lot right beside me. They're not here. And they've had every opportunity to. I just think we shouldn't rush to do anything. There's a special use meeting that we could have as a planning board. We don't have to wait a month for the next meeting, couldn't we not? If we need time to research and develop language or consider options, that's just my thing.
Bruce?
This town needs this entitlement. It's talking about it, you talked about it. But that doesn't want to use her product. My honor, consider tentative, you want to change. So you get the best of both of us. But we're trying to stick around paying this for a hole. I don't know how the owner acquired this property. My guess is it wasn't specifically with the intent to do this. I'm just guessing. But just because you, however you acquire it, doesn't mean you just want to do your, your, your. We looked at two different plans. It's clear that this area that we're talking about is to be preserved and loved and protected. We're pushing real hard at the same time. This process, I don't see justification for it.
So the statement of reasonableness that we've been, we've been given is, is really the statement of consistency?
Yes, so the planning board should adopt a statement of consistency. And that, that's gonna determine whether special use permit is consistent or inconsistent.
So this, this statement of, of reasonableness says the planning board finds a proposed special use permit for the property located at the three-twenty Star Hill Drive to allow the construction of twenty-two townhome units with four of 22 townhome units with 44 parking spaces, reasonable and consistent with the town's adopted CAMA land use plan, as well as the unified development ordinance of the town.
The, I think that was, there, because the staff doesn't make any prediction of whether the planning board will be, feel that it's consistent or inconsistent.
What I'm saying, though, is this, the one provided only, this one only says that it's consistent with the adopted plan. This one, the memo, I'm just asking which one we're.
I think you can discard that, and let's, let's talk through what I think the consensus is to move this conversation along.
Okay.
So, I think if there's a feeling that it's inconsistent, and, you know, so you'd reference Policy Number 10, so you'd say that planning board deems that the proposed special use permit is inconsistent with Section 4.2.2 of the 2000, which is land use compatibility of the 2007 CAMA land use plan. So, that's how you would address that piece of it. On the flip side, with the comprehensive plan, we go to that future land use map, and you can use that reference to pull that up. The only location that's on my chance.
Which one?
For the future land use map. Okay, so then you would reference Section 5.1, future land use categories of the CAMA and comprehensive plan, so that, those would be the two references. Yeah.
That it is inconsistent.
Now, that's just assuming that's the consensus that the planning board has. If, if there's a different consensus, you would, you know, find a section that you feel is consistent with. Ultimately, you know, you could, you could find things in both of these documents to make an argument for, or against any development that comes through. That's part of the subjective, you know? So, whatever direction you're going with it, if it's inconsistent, you've identified something in both documents now that is inconsistent, so that's what needs to be in that statement of consistency.
And there are statements that are consistent, that we would offer a variety of options.
Yes, so that, you know, it could be either way. Yes, that's, that's where the preference or the consensus of the planning board, I'd, I'd say to go with that and work off of that to develop whether it's consistent or inconsistent.
So, does someone want to make a motion to that the, this, this 22-town home development at 320 Star Hill Drive is inconsistent with the 2007 CAMA land use plan referencing Policy 10, and with the 2022 adopted CAMA use plan, or, and reference 5-1, state, the statement, or the future land use map?
Make the motion, you just said.
Okay, so I made the motion. Can I get a second?
You got it.
So, this is for inconsistent. Can I get a show of hands for all in favor? One, two, three, four, five. I just want everybody to understand that Paxton cannot vote because she is the ETJ representative. It's not that she's dissenting, she just doesn't vote on, on certain things. This is one of the things she doesn't vote on. Okay, so are we good? Okay, so let's shoot through this last one, which should be much easier because we've, we've been all through this. Everybody has reviewed it. Some of the differences is that it's, it's about half the size, but it is, I help you?
I was going to talk about what you're about to talk about. I'm one of the owners of the property that you're about to discuss.
123?
The one on Taylor Notion?
123 on Taylor Notion.
And I'm not a very good speaker, so I'm sorry, my heart flies and I'm sweating underneath my arms. Not very good at this, but I hear what y'all are saying about all the other. But to me, here is a business. There's a restaurant, there's a golf course, there's a, I mean, all of y'all, I guess, live out there, so you know what's there. Right beside it are townhouses. So, I hope you will consider that being consistent with what is there. Anyway, my name is Georgia Ricks. I live at Immortal, and how I got this property was, it was inherited, given to me by my grandfather, who was one of, sorry, George Spell was one of the founders of Star Hill, and that's why I'm here, and I'm hoping y'all will consider doing this, because it is beside a business in condos.
So, what's, what's, what we have to consider is that what's next door is not townhouses. What's next door is condominiums, and that's, that's a difference. What's next door is, is condominiums. They're not, they're not townhouses. So, there is a, you know, you buy the air inside the walls, right, effectively. So, that, that is a little bit different. It is certainly not single-family homes.
Might explain that. You know, a lot of people use those two terms meaning the same thing. Townhouses and condominiums.
Yes, so a condominium is not, is not a single-family residence. I, you know, I mean, you can make condominium look like a single-family dwelling, and there may only be one family living in there, but it isn't, you don't, you don't own the land under it. So, you know, it has a different, you know, kind of has a different meaning, and, and the, you know, if you, if you call your insurance company, they'll help explain how that's different. Um, so, but there are, it is Taylor Notion. There is commercial property there. There is, there is a lot of space for development on Taylor Notion, and that, and that's a consideration. There are single-family homes on Taylor Notion. It is next to the golf course and everything else, and it is just across the street from the triangle that we've talked about, medium-density. It's, 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 the lot is half the size, but it's, we're only talking about nine units. And if you look at this, the plan right now is for it to be 24 and a half foot wide. Now, a 24 and a half wide, 24 and a half foot wide townhome is pretty swanky looking compared to, you know, like, I don't want to, I don't want to point out anything around here because my, one of the owners might be here, but, you know, like up, you know, like up north, there's, you know, some of the older, you know, true townhomes are quite skinny, or if you go into historic areas like Fredericksburg, Virginia, you know, they're literally 10 feet wide, and, and it, it, it looks cheesy, right? You know, it, but when you're starting to get up there into like 24 and a half feet, they, that is a very attractive townhome. Now, this plan does, does provide for two and a half parking spaces. They did not provide for the 20-foot buffer, which they would have to meet. Now, the thing that we have to consider is, is there, is there room, um, you know, to, to allow a smaller, another area, you know, closer to the triangle, to allow these kind of projects to go through, and then write very specific language and, and make changes to our UDO, you know, to, to accommodate this kind of thing.
This one does make more sense, like you're saying. It's right next to the triangle, and I think it could be approved in the future, or it could be consistent with the plan in the future, where if we all did agree, and the Board of Commissioners did agree, that the triangle means both sides of Taylor Notion, yes, sure, then it makes sense. As it stands now, it's still the same, you know, situation in my opinion.
So, technically, technically, it's the same answer, but, but maybe there's, there is a, a, a way to, you know, to kind of, you know, because it doesn't make sense, right? If you had a bunch of townhouses on one side of the street and none on the other, you know, kind of, um, so I, I would actually consider tabling this for another meeting.
To get by the thing you mentioned on the other one, tabling.
You can't. Yeah, we can't. That's a good point. How do, how do you, how do you get around the 45-day?
This is not easy, okay? If you ask me right now, I would have all the reasons that we talked about in the other one up there on Star Hill Drive. I have the same ones for this, because, you know, for, since 1973, people bought into Star Hill for what it is, okay?
Not everybody. So, what about the eight existing units right beside, there four right beside?
You told, you told me that they preceded the ordinance.
They did. They did.
Well, since 1973.
But everybody has not bought. I mean, these have changed hands. These have met the needs of many, many families right here, these condos. Many families, young, old, retired, active, one-story, two-story. They have met the needs of many people, the condos right next to them, and, and these would meet the needs. You think somebody's going to build something not expecting it to sell and meet the needs of people? Of course not. It will meet the needs of people who want that particular.
Hi. Zach, let me ask you a question. If, if, how could we, how could we make a statement on this to the board, but leave the door open, or, you know, for, well, it's a special use permit, so we really can, or we have, no, before we, before we weigh in on the specifics, we have to have the text change for the planning board to be able to weigh in, which we currently don't have. So, as we sit right now, the planning board can't say, we think this, you know, this project, you know, you know, this special use project, you know, is, is, is a good project under these circumstances, these conditions. Uh, we can't do that right now because currently the planning board doesn't have that authority. All we get to say is it consistent or inconsistent, and I think we've arrived that, that it is, that it is inconsistent.
Thank you. So, a couple of things to consider. Just because it's inconsistent with the plan doesn't necessarily mean, sometimes with these things, the plan is deemed amended. If something inconsistent's passed, then it could, it'd still proceed forward. But what I'd say is, if there's specific policies that you're saying it's inconsistent with, you could develop recommendations for site-specific requirements, which is part of the special use permit process. If you're saying, you know, we feel, you know, this is an issue, so the recommended action or condition to put on it, you could suggest something that would address whatever the.
But the current process doesn't give us the ability to make those statements. That right now, the, the current process only allows us to offer a statement of consistency.
Yes, I mean, I do think you probably provide, if you do have specific elements that were used to reach that statement in specific considerations, I think you could provide that in the statement if there's things that you want the board to consider when they're considering the special use permit, so.
I don't think we're prepared right now to offer those specifics to make this, to make this clear enough. First of all, I don't think, I don't think we have taken the time to say, these are the conditions, right? We could say, you know, I love the UDO, right? You know, I want to see the 20-foot buffer because it says it, the UDO, you know? So, those are the kind of, those are the kind of things I want to, I want to see, but I think there's also some other things that we can, that we can tweak.
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, it's probably.
But not at nine o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, the public hearing's been set for Monday, so, I mean, it's, you mentioned the 45-day window, you know, I think probably arriving one way or another is probably the best appropriate action, because.
Yeah.
You did the risk.
So, if we, if we, if we say no, and the, and the Board of Commissioners takes our recommendation, is, is there a mechanism for the developer to come back and say, let's work it again?
I think the simple answer is, it gets denied by the Board of Commissioners, the developer can come back later day.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Well, we can.
But he changed.
I understand the locations differently, but it's still R-30? Well, you can't change R-30, because if you do that, it's higher yellow area. If you change, if you make the special.
Well, I don't, I don't think this, I don't think this planning board would ever support making a sweeping change to all of R-30, but I think there are locations in town that fit into the, it fit into the new land use plan. In other words, on one side of Taylor Notion, our plan, if someone chose to develop it, is that you could build townhouses or patio homes, or whatever, whatever other attached dwellings you want on one side of the street, but right now, you cannot do it on the other side. Yes, yeah, so Taylor Notion is, Taylor Notion is one of the legs of the triangle. So, that's why I say if we, you know, if we want to apply all the same rules right now, we would have to say it's inconsistent. Yeah, and, and, and again, there is a need. This, this is, this identifies that same need of coming up with that, that new zoning category that addresses this, this type of development in, in the appropriate places, but there's a lot of conditions that we have to come up with. Sarah?
And Zach obviously knows more than me about town development, but when we talk about the triangle, we want a high density there. We haven't even figured out our zoning yet, like you're saying, to where you have that high density. Say you have, you know, the condos above shops, and then out from there you have townhouses, and so you sort of have to bleed it into the single-family, and so we haven't even figured that out because our land use plan or, excuse me, the comprehensive plan is just newly adopted. So, I think, like we've said, it, it could fit in there in the future, but we haven't all agreed on it, so it's inconsistent this time.
So, I'm, does anybody have anything else? Do you have anything?
No.
Neil? Okay, Mike?
The only thing I was going to say, when we discussed all of this, when we were adopting the plans in summer and had all the meetings and stuff, you know, we talked about all of the possibilities, and, what was her name, Darby?
Ann Darby.
Ann Darby, you know, she proposed a far-fetched thing, conceptual thing, and I knew when I saw it that that's what it was, but we never talked about across the street. It was always inside the triangle.
Yeah.
I, for the same reasons, with the same opinions I have about the one up on, I like, I have the same ones here, because it's risky. You know, I, I just don't know how to, I've not been around here long enough to know how to do this thing, make it come out the way I think it should, and I, you know, just struggle with it.
Paxton?
There's not going to be any development across the street, because that's mine, and I'm not going to do it. So, this is something that is needed. It's right beside a nice, four-family structure. I don't care if you call it townhomes, because on the ends, they're single-family with fireplaces. In the middle, they're two-story, and they're four different families, and I have had so many witters ask me, when are you going to do such and such? When are you going to do such and such? And, and this developer wants to do something nice, right beside existing, and I think it's consistent with providing options according to that land use plan, so you can pick pieces of any land use plan, the one that was developed and. developed and adopted by the Federal Resources Commission in two thousand and seven. You can pick pieces out of that, or, and you can pick pieces out that say, oh, no, no, no. I would love to see this project.
May I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Reagan Porter from one of four Quailwood Circle. Um, I hear what Ms. Holt is saying about that she would love the idea, that she would buy one, that she would love to live in one. I have a really hard time understanding how the town did the triangle, and that is zoned for medium density, which would, um, by definition, fit the mold for the townhomes that we speak of. And you love the idea and you like the idea, but you're against the idea when it comes to your land, which is the triangle. But you're willing to, you love it for somebody else to develop it. And I, I guess I'm having, um, a difficulty understanding the consistency in your argument, as far as why you wouldn't want to put it on your land if you're passionate about it, and you think it's a excellent idea, why you're not invested when it comes to your land, but you're invested when it comes to someone else's and impacting the lives around those areas.
That's because there is nobody here protesting that particular thing who lives anywhere near it. And I can't educate you on my part and tell you anything, because you and I have diverse opinions. And I'm not going to convince you, and you're not going to convince me, but nobody is going to make me develop my property.
I totally respect that, but I feel like you're trying to sell the rest of us on what an excellent idea it is when you don't necessarily believe in it yourself.
I do believe in that project.
Okay.
I certainly do.
And I'm, I'm approaching you with respect, I'm not disrespecting you.
Well, I, I just cannot sway you, and you can't sway me.
I understand that, I wouldn't develop my way of either, if I was in your situation.
Yep. I, I think it's important to remember that, that a developer, you know, that, that is, that is an investment, and they wait for the right time and the right opportunity to make the most of their investment. And sometimes people will, can sit on that for literally generations, regardless of whether or not they truly believe in it. If, if it's not the right time to cash in on their investment, it's just, it's just not the right time, so. Um, and we, and we really, we have to respect that. Yeah.
Um, I, I just got to say this.
Sure.
We moved here because Cape Carret was like a quiet coastal golf community.
Yeah.
And that was the allure of the place and, and nature. We, we left the place, started that way.
Yeah.
And they started bringing in, like, um, townhomes, condominiums, and then it became so dense and horrible, um, that they ruined the town, maintenance was, the, the character was. Um, I don't do your jobs at all. Cape Carret is right in that.
Yes.
Where you're wanting to expand. You want to do that. Problem is, do you want to be a clean coastal town with a golf course and all that, like a Monterey or a Carmel? Or do you want to be a tone-structured city? Like, and, and that's where you're going to go.
Yeah. And, and the recent, the recent public engagement that, that was done, and the surveys uh, for the land use plan, everyone came back and said, keep the small-town feel. That was one of the most important things, was keep that small-town feel. And we, we are now invested in that, right? Now it's, now it's in our land use plan, it's, it's, it's basically Cape Carret law. So, and, and that, that's how we're going to approach everything, and I, and I'm not going to speak for the Board of Commissioners, but they adopted that same land use plan, and I think everybody has, um, a genuine affection for our small town. And that's why you're here, that's why we serve, yeah.
But, and besides condominiums, townhouses, and the business, I don't feel like this is going to turn Cape Carret into a trash city. I think we can do a nice spell, look nice, with maybe more municipal members who are golfers to help support it.
You hear.
I just don't see where non-unit is going to change the whole look of the town on Taylor Notion Road. I know for a fact that I don't want a single dwelling unit there because of all the traffic, how loud it is. This is kind of what it needs, and what it's called for, either another business. But I don't think that single dwelling belongs there, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I think, I think what I'm, let me, let me hear from Bruce, but I, but I think the general consensus is, is that um, on Taylor Notion, that there, that there may be room for, for medium-density development, um, you know, across the street from the triangle. Um, you know, that, that, you know, when we think about it, it would make sense if you've got, if you, if you've got that type of development on one side of the road, that you would have it on the other, so.
Karen, one last thing from me, please. Um, talk with the D O P, which part of the work for, Art Craven. Uh, we'll have to go through the stormwater dance and some data control. We, this is not cast in iron, we know we've got some issues. Not particularly, we've got exterior issues that you don't go back.
Regarding one-twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, all we are trying to do is say, hey, we think this will work, uh, it's going to be difficult. There's spatial problems and there are other problems, had the survey and the code draft survey done, and we've had the soil scientists about the good soil, and so there, there are a lot of moving pieces here, but please give us a chance to build nine units. That's what I hope.
Bruce?
You know, in the lending business, commercial lending, borrower wants a quick answer. If you want an answer today, the answer is no. But maybe we can work this out. Give us time, so that's how I'm feeling about this.
Yeah. I, I, I think that feels like the general consensus, but at this point, with the current regulation, the only thing we can do is either vote for, that it's either consistent or inconsistent. So I am going to make a motion, uh, that we send a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that this development that we've, this plan we've been handed is inconsistent with four-dash-one of the two thousand and seven Camel Land Use Plan, and inconsistent with, um, the future land use map in the two thousand and twenty-two, uh, adopted Camel Land Use Plan. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Second? All in, all in favor of sending an, uh, inconsistent recommendation to the board, show of hands? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, five zero, again, Paxton is not voting for this. Um, for, for procedural reasons. Um, and I believe that, is that, we have, um, a couple of more things on the, on the agenda, but they're really kind of, here, but, let me see. I'm, uh, town, town manager's comments?
Yeah, well, I was just waiting to see if you were sticking around or going.
Hey, folks, all right, we're still conducting the meeting, we've still got a couple of more agenda items. You're welcome to step outside or stay, I just ask that you respect the process.
All right, so, uh, something I'll mention for this week, um, June ninth, June tenth, we've got a CPNI workshop talking about some of the future, um, opportunities for the town, um, you know, talking about a main street, a town center, um, just talking about what steps would have to take place to get to that point, you know, in terms of infrastructure, the logistics of wastewater. Um, so I think it's a productive step in having that conversation about what could be possible, and then what steps need to be achieved, or what milestones would need to be reached for that to be a possibility. So I think it's a good opportunity, um, you know, for the planning board to be present there. Um, I believe Heather sent out some information before the meeting about that.
Now, is that a two-day workshop or a one-day workshop on two occasions?
It's a two-day workshop, so, um, the way that we're kind of approaching it, just logistically is, we'll have a listening session for kind of the general public to listen in to the, the workshop and hear what's going on. And then we'll have kind of a core group, um, you know, with the planning board and a couple of members of the community, um, to really have kind of the focused discussion here.
And that's on Friday?
That'll be on Thursday, and then, uh, we'll have a conclusion of that on Friday, so. Um, so hopefully that'll be a productive conversation, I think it's something, it's a good next step. Um, you know, we know what a lot of the challenges are, I think this kind of brings us to talk about those challenges and what has to be achieved. Um, I did note that at the, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting, there was that, um, Jonathan McDaniel brought up about the possibility of utilizing some of the wastewater capacity of Highway twenty-four um, at Cannon's Gate, and, uh, you know, the Vogel Watch area up there. Um, so that's a good potential opportunity, um, if it could logistically and feasibly be achieved. That might provide the wastewater treatment capacity to bring some of those things to fruition, but, um, so I think it'd be a productive conversation, kind of weighing in on, you know, kind of building on the momentum of the land use plan and the comprehensive plan, and talking through, you know, what steps would have to take place, so. Um, and this is a group of experts that, um, it's a volunteer group of architects, engineers, builders, um, folks from NC Growth. Uh, so I think it'd be a really productive conversation, um, they go around the state and they provide the service to, to small towns, um, for main street planning and for economic development, so. They're going to be a really good opportunity, and I think time will spend.
Is this in person or online?
So it'd be in-person for the, kind of the core group, um, because they're bringing a lot of people, I expect we'll have a fair number of people.
Okay.
From the town, so, um, then it'll be a virtual option for folks to listen in and kind of.
Okay.
What the conversation is, and then they can submit their comments and feedback. Uh, we're going to provide that email address for them to reach out, and we'll pass that along, so Friday, taking all that feedback and that discussion from Thursday, they'll develop some strategic recommendations about next steps.
Yeah.
And, and how we can approach this thing, so, I think it'd be a really good opportunity, uh, so. Um, so that'll be.
One to three on Thursday, and eight-thirty to ten-thirty on, eight-thirty to ten-thirty on Friday?
Uh, let's see. Send it to.
One more prayer?
Eight-thirty twelve.
Then I'll also mention, um, just kind of as a follow-up, uh, to some of our conversation about um, some of the requirements for treating, um, stormwater runoff. And it's something I talked to John Freshwater about, I wanted to pass it along to the board, just, I know that conversation will continue, uh, you know, after I'm not here, I've got ten days left, so, um, but just, just to pass information along CR and the loop. Um, so, we're proposing that standard, one thing to think about is what's required for SA Waters, and I've got that table up there on the screen. Um, and just some good information, kind of be thinking about what's required, so the retention standard is for that one-year twenty-four-hour storm. And if you reference the precipitation table, that you have that three-point-six-six inches of retention, um, that would be the requirement for a twenty-four-hour storm, so. Just some good information as you proceed with discussing the stormwater ordinance requirements, and, uh, just something to think about. A lot of the, the town is subject to the requirement, if it is a state stormwater permit required, uh, project, so it's just something to think about.
Can you send this to me, so we have access to this after you are?
Yes, yeah, I'll send that along, just so y'all have that as you continue, because that is, you know, again, probably going to be a multi-month, uh, discussion, um, to really get it right and iron it out, so. Um, but, but yeah, that's the, uh, the main stuff I have to share, I just, uh, you know, it's been a pleasure working with all of y'all, this is also my last planning board meeting, so. Sure enough, we went out with a, a bang, and, uh, you know, definitely, uh, you know, can appreciate, try a record meeting for us for the planning boards, so. But, you know, important things to discuss tonight, and, uh, glad that, that there was the opportunity for everybody to weigh in and discuss it, so. Um, and I know that, uh, the town's in good hands with Frank coming in, I think he's going to be a, a great asset to the town, and I know that y'all work together well with him, and appreciate the work that y'all do, it's not an easy job by any means, um, as we saw this evening, and, uh, you know, just keep up the hard work, you know, I think there's really positive and, and bright things on the horizon for Cape Carret. So excited to see where the town goes in the future.
Yeah.
Will there be any overlap, Zach, between you and Frank?
There'd be a, a two-day overlap, but I'll be a resource for, uh, for Franklin, whatever he needs, so. Uh, you know, he's, he's got my number, and, you know, he can pick up the phone anytime.
Well, be sure to leave your number with all of them.
Yes, yes, I'll definitely do that, so, and if y'all are ever passing through Franklinson, and, uh, end up US one, stop on in and see.
Okay, next is planning board member comments, if anybody has a comment, I'll kill you. That's my comment. Um, so, Bruce, do you have anything? Paxton? I, I have nothing, other than Zach, thank you so much for everything you've done, and the way you've supported us, and kind of walked us through some difficult things. Mike, nothing, Sarah? Neil? Okay, I moved to adjourn, can I get a second? Adjourn, bye, everybody, thank you.